Well, good morning, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you could all please rise. Father Hans Jacobs with St. Peter's Orthodox Church will lead us in prayer this morning. Thank you for being with us.
My pleasure. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear heavenly Father, the people gathered here for leadership of our community. Lord, I have aspired and have been chosen to bring, Lord, into this great community of Benita Springs, a promising and flourishing future. Grant them the wisdom and the insight that they need to make the right decisions. Grant them a far-ranging vision where they can see what is necessary, that their decisions that they make today and in the near future would have good and strong ramifications long-term. Bless and flourish this community. Make it a place of safety and stability, dear Lord, because order and stability are real necessary for the flourishing of the city, but also the flourishing of our personal lives. What they do is tied into the personal lives of many, many people, and so they need your wisdom, and they need your insight, so that the decisions they make may be sound and strong. Dear heavenly Father, bless the work of this body, dear Lord, and may your grace work within them and within all the decisions and deliberations that they make. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Father.
Yep, you're welcome.
Mayor Kevin Ruane, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Yeah.
Councilman Gibson.
Present.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Well, good morning, everybody. How are you? We have a special guest with us, Mayor Kevin Ruane, who's going to speak in just a moment. But I want to open this up to public comment first. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Councilman, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's good to see you all. Let me preface my remarks by saying I think the council is a hard-working group, and I think the city is well-run. But with that, we do have our disagreements, I'm sure, and that's democracy. The tax, proposed tax, I know is going to be discussed. I'm talking on ignorance in a way, because I was away up north, and I just came through, and I'm reading, back-reading some of the articles. And I think that the utility tax as proposed, I'll try to get this meeting in October, is a good, is a good thing. The reason I say that is because Benita is in a unique position geographically, water flow coming from Trafford. We've had floods, I remember, back in the, when I was on the council, we had a severe flooding with feces, all kinds of items on the street. We spent a lot of money, the city of Benita, in upgrading Old Forty-One and getting the pipes in and the water flow. And we need that utility. We spent a lot of money in the last hurricane. We need that money for grant purposes, and we need the money to keep our water flow studies going. I think it's a very important aspect of city government to make sure that the waters, the taxes that we, that we apply are applied to issues that are a priority. So that's number one. Number two, there's an item on the agenda about regional interlocking agreements with the bus and transit. I can't understand why the city councils haven't used their holy pulpit for a regional transit authority. When I was on the council, I voted against some measures that the bus companies wanted because it's so confined. I don't think we even have a transit to Colia. Half the people in Lee County work in Colia, half the people in Colia, working people, work here. So we should have a regional transit authority. I know it's a long-term planning, and I hope it's on the agenda for the transit planning I think that the last thing I'll say is Bamboo Village. Bamboo Village is land that we acquired originally for development, and the city council decided to keep it open space later, when the anti-medi and group backed out. I don't want to see, and a lot of people don't want to see, the city of Benita all brick and mortar. We need open space. Selling that for taxes, if taxes could be stable, that's not a good option. We need open space. That Bamboo Village property is old flower. It enhances that area, and to sell it is to sell your 401s to go to a movie. It just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thanks for being here this morning. Good to see you. Love that you haven't lost that New England accent, council. Great, great. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Anthony Profetto. I'm the president of Benita Springs Little League. I'm here to speak about an agenda item today about improving Benita Springs Community Park, the baseball fields specifically. I just want to thank, first of all, Deputy Mayor Peter O'Flynn. When the park was damaged in Hurricane Irma, and he came to us, we reached out to him, and he was there on a Sunday, calling me on my cellphone, talking to me about what we wanted, you know, for the park and everything. And it's just kind of blew up from there, where we reached out to different places. Then the city started trying to do improvements with Waldrup Engineering. We thank them as well, because they came to us in the early planning stages and asked us for our opinions about what you're about to see tonight. So that's really great. Thank Arlene for putting up with me and our questions, and always being there on the phone or emails or whatever we needed.
Arlene gets to put up with me.
Yeah, she does. Nicole and Jason, Nicole and Jason are great. They're absolutely fantastic, always there on the phone, or a text, or an email, or whatever we needed, whenever we had questions about things for the park. Basically, a partnership that we've had, and it's been about the past year that we've been moving forward. We hope to keep moving forward that partnership. You know, a thing like a baseball field isn't going to be widely used without an organization like Little League, and Little League can't happen without a community that will provide it with baseball fields. And we provide a good place for kids to be, and we thank you guys for considering it. Just for the record, we're absolutely in love with their plan. We support it, and we thank them for their continued efforts to keep us as part of the planning stages and getting our ideas out there.
Wonderful. Thanks, thanks for being here. Good mor— thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good morning, Wes, how are you?
I'm well, good morning. I'm here today, Wes Wyman-Miller, chairman of the board of Everglades Wonder Gardens. I'm here today to speak on green sheet item 1909297, the review and approve the scope for the Wonder Gardens Cafe request for proposals. As the chairman of the Everglades Wonder Gardens, we would like to, as a board, officially express our interest in leasing that building for our use as our environmental learning center. I sent you all an email. Hopefully, everyone received it and had a chance to review it. We welcomed more than 60,000 guests last year to the Wonder Gardens, continue our success. We expect, you know, our numbers to continue growing, as much as 20% as they have been in attendance. You know, our operational success, fundraising efforts, have put us in a very strong financial position, which continues to improve as we also continue to improve the property. We look to the mission and the future of the Wonder Gardens, and we believe that our focus should be increasingly on the educational components of the Wonder Gardens. We've established an environmental learning center that to date has held such programs as summer, themed summer camps, and the Florida Landscaping Expert Certification Program for landscaping committees of the gated communities in our, in our area. Future fundraising for the Wonder Gardens is really going to be assisted in our educational offerings to the public, to the community. And the addition of our, the space that is available, as well as the opportunity to improve that and continue to improve the Wonder Gardens, will give us a platform to continue to fundraise, to improve that property as we have been. And so, I submitted a document showing the case. There are several points we made on that document. A couple of things I will highlight. Last year, the Wonder Gardens raised the value of the fixed assets from $2,800 to $243,000 through fundraising efforts. Obviously, as a 501(c)(3) organization, we can solicit external funds. We're not just relying on revenue from sale of items, which gives us a platform to really be successful. We've already received a pledge from one of our board members who will, if, if we're able to secure the, the restaurant building as an educational facility, to give us a lead gift to refurbish the entire main building, to grow the gift shop area, and continue to increase our earned revenue in that area as well. See if I have anything else to touch on. I think that's it. We're available for any questions. We'd just like to be considered in addition to the RFP that's going out. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Wes.
And your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wes. Okay, other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Francesca Pasadena for the record, 4001 Tamiami Trail North. Coming from Naples, Florida, we represent, excuse me, Link Zuckerman Benita Grand LLC, and we're here to formally seek clarification and object to the year-based amendments related to the coastal element. I think we, we need clarification. We've been through this pro— my client has been working with the city for over a year, submitted an application in July. I've been informed that they were never formally informed, excuse me, that the coastal management area would be potentially expanded to the coastal high hazard area. We still do not know, and I spoke with your planners this morning, we still do not know the impact that may have on our development rights. As you can imagine, that's significant. If, if the coastal management area and its related policies are to be extended to my client's property, and I have a letter here for you that can, can detail our understanding of the impact, it would reduce density significantly, dripping something like 430 units from the property based on the link between the coastal management area and other policies in your coastal element. So I'll hand these to the clerk, these letters, and if you have any further questions for me, I'll, I'll stick around.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Well, we'll, this is a public comment portion of the meeting, so we'll take a look and let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
Of course.
Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Dwight Essman from Paradise Road, that's Dwight as in Eisenhower. Some questions. I hope these will be answered in the course of the meeting, and I'm sorry I was running late, couldn't find a place to park. For CBRE, do they have an estimate, just a ballpark estimate, of the, the value of the land that the city owns downtown? Low price, high price, just a ballpark figure? For you members of the council, is there a consensus for what should be done with that land? Do you want to get the highest price? You want to make the best use of it to bring people downtown? And just one other comment, when the city was formed, there was talk about putting City Hall downtown. And I just wonder if there's been any other consideration about selling this building, building a place with more parking, a bigger auditorium, and putting it downtown? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Council, what's your preference?
Pollay.
Pollay. Anything else, Greg?
No.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve the rest?
Second.
And there's been a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Item A.
Item A for the benefit of the public is the interlocal agreement with Lee County on the bus transportation system. I'm going to vote yes on this for this year, but I, but I do think that particularly now, we have a new, we have a new county commissioner, and I'll talk later about conversations I've had with him, not about this item, but we ought to be getting to the point where we are not, I think, giving over $100,000 a year to Lee County for the bus system. I believe we're the only municipality that does this now. There's a history to it that made a lot of sense, way it was established that way, but I do think we need some, we clearly need to have some conversations with Lee County, or more conversations with Lee County about making this more regular, consistent with other municipalities.
Right.
Okay, other discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve with a second, and Pete, your comments are right on. Right on. We continue to fund something that's not really utilized, not many people know about it, but however, it does provide a critical service. But having said that, I am positive there's a better way to do it. So your, your comments are spot-on. So there's been a motion to approve and a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, we are now going— thanks, council. We are going to move on to proclamations and presentations, and we have Sanibel Mayor Kevin Ruane with us today to address water, water quality legislative priorities, and an upcoming trip to Washington, D.C. This is green sheet number 1909299. Mayor, welcome. Thanks for being with us this morning.
Good morning, Kevin Ruane, for the record, Mayor of Sanibel, but I'm here today as the president of Florida League of Mayors. I come to you before this body, the Florida League of Mayors, and our 51-person board approve water quality and water quantity unanimously to go forward in the state. Additionally, the U.S. Conference of Mayors actually supported an initiative for permanent funding for SERP projects in Everglades. There was over 1,400 mayors that obviously signed off on it, went through the environment committee, as well as a full committee. With that in mind, what we're trying to do is take our priorities to Washington. But let me digress for a second, understand and make sure you all understand what is our priorities, both water quality and water quantity. Many people ask what those are. Okay, quantity is all about projects. Quantity is the 67 projects on the integrated delivery schedule. That's the basic playbook we have with the federal government to say, here are the projects we're going to do, and here are all the storage issues and all various projects we'll have. With that in mind, there's a course-sharing agreement. State puts an X, federal puts an X, 50/50 course-sharing. The federal government's about $1 billion behind, as we all are aware. This governor has come and stepped forward in a big way. He's made an effort, obviously, to fund and made a bold initiative, day two of his administration, for $2.5 billion. In year one, he asked the legislator for $625 million, he got $682 million. So legislator, both in the House and the Senate, are behind that. Our really challenge is with the federal government, the House, in their wisdom, actually put together a bill, went through and actually passed for permanent funding for $200 million, obviously, to have these projects continue to move. Unfortunately, the Senate actually did not move forward with that initiative. We found out the hard way that the Senate actually can pull a bill, and one senator could prevent the bill from going to the floor. So that's one of the challenges. It's really imperative that we obviously do this, and we feel with the governor's initiative, with the support of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, with the Florida League of Mayors, working together, we're going to go to Washington next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I'll be back up in two more times in October with the FAST Committee, which is the Federal Action Strike Team, and I'm also part of the ecosystem task force with many of the members of federal and state that sit on that. But the ask is really simple, and I come to you because if we're going to ask for water quality initiatives and water quantity initiatives, the quality falls on us, okay? And we in our own backyard need to make sure that we're doing all we can do, whether it's for fertilizer, whether it's a stormwater runoff, whether it's for any type of reclaimed water, whether we're going to try to maintain home rule. We're going to hold, you know, maintain home rule, stop any preemptions, not only with just fertilizer, but water quality, especially when we cross over into comprehensive land use planning, okay? We obviously have had some issues here locally, and the Florida League of Mayors have taken a very bold stand to say, when it comes and we cross over to comprehensive use planning, we need to sit at the table, okay? We need, at the very least, we don't want any preemption from the state level, on the same token, the Florida League of Mayors believe we don't want any preemption from the county level. And I'm just really trying to identify the issues. We broke them down between federal, state, and local, and I think what's really important when you go through them, the federal aren't anything we're asking for. The federal obviously will help, not only the dedicating funding sources, block grants that are important for your city with your flooding, but as important, block grants can be both on the federal and state side when it comes to septic conversions. We could identify the hotspots, okay, the ones that are leaching, the ones that are breaching, and identify those to be their priority, and it's going to need a team effort, federal, state, and even county money to kind of put this together and identify those, because it is really an oxymoron if we're going to ask for funding for these quantity projects and if we're not going to take care of our own backyard. I was very instrumental working with Florida, with Fort Myers and Cape Coral, they have a pipeline that's obviously going to do, and Fort Myers is actually going to use all their reclaimed water and send it to Cape Coral. They need that, and in exchange, they built a $13 million pipeline. We were fortunate enough to work with the majority leader to come up with $3 million worth of funding for that. So when there's projects, what we want to do as the president of Florida League of Mayors, we want to use our facilities to obviously help in any way we can to try to advocate for that. We're on the same page. I'm blessed to have five mayors, including myself being the sixth, that really are about water quality, but most importantly, these initiatives were passed. I give each one a copy, I want you to look at those, and really what I'm going to do, and go through the entire state, is go municipality by municipality and make sure we all adopt these, and we walk the walk, and we talk the talk, because obviously, no sense in doing that. I'm very blessed to have your mayor coming with me, Mayor Simmons, I have people from the north, from the east, and the west, and the south, all coming with us to Washington. Senator Rubio has been a champion in identifying the people. We're actually going through not only the energy area, we're going to the environment area and appropriations. So we'll have our running shoes on next week, obviously identifying the appropriate people that we need to see. Senator Rubio has made a commitment to us that he will call the senators that historically have pulled bills. He's going to call them personally and obviously make his pitch. He's on appropriations, which is really important. So we're working in a very collective effort. I bring the update to you for two reasons. One, to let you know what we're doing, but two, I'm going to ask each city with our priorities, water quality priorities that the league's mayors have adopted, I'm going to ask each city to adopt those as well. So you do have a copy of the sheet, I have extra copies if you need them. This is obviously impacts our economy, this impacts our quality of life, there's no bigger issue, we could all just go back to last year, remember the horror we were going through. I certainly was at Ground Zero with 850,000 pounds of dead fish that washed up on our beaches. So I don't want to go through this again. Everything is lining up. The governor's there, both in Tallahassee, the House and the Senate are there, the House is certainly here, the president has made a commitment. I just think if we're ever going to fix this once and for all, it's now, and we want to continue to make sure, we put whatever pressure we can, and we want to make sure that we do what we can locally. Questions?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a fantastic presentation, Kevin, and council, I don't know if you've had a chance to digest what, what he's, I think we know the general idea, but the verbiage here, the language is, I'm looking for it myself. Thank you, Kevin. Do you want to read the, yeah, go ahead and read that language, Kevin, if you don't mind, or, well.
I can read forever, okay.
Well, that's a one-pager, Kevin. Yeah, there we go, there we go.
I'm glad you can do that, Peter.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Yeah, just—
Federal priorities, we're looking for a dedicated funding source, okay? Federal priorities, we're looking for obviously any type of block grants to help water quality. That could be flood, that could obviously septic. We want to continue monitoring for agro blooms. We want obviously any type of relief we can for commercial fishing, obviously that's been impacted, a lot of fish has been gone. We want to obviously continue with the offshore drilling. That's the federal ask. On the state side, we want to continue with obviously SERP, that's necessary, to fund these 67 projects. We want to obviously help people from the north with their springs and protection and restoration. We need to obviously water's water as far as we're concerned. We want to continue to fund upgrading reuse water. Sanibel just is going through a $25 million conversion in our wastewater plants, where we're actually removing nitrogen phosphate and obviously reclaiming that water. It's what Cape Coral's doing with Fort Myers. We want to continue to fund agro bloom, and obviously the governor has done so, any type of monitoring, any type of scientific, anything we can do related to that. We want to increase protection of wetlands. Obviously, that's going to come an issue here, not only in our own county and natural resource recharge areas. We want to continue to quality and water supply associated with climate change and sea level rise. People don't want to talk about it, but sea level rise is going to have an impact, okay? It's going to have the impact, obviously, on water quality and water quantity. Local, we want to maintain home rule. We want to stop preemption on any local audiences, design and protect water quality and comprehensive land use planning. Obviously, we had some issues last year, we want to continue to make sure throughout the entire state we do that. Increase protection of wetlands and natural resource recharge areas, resilient planning to address water quality, water supply associated with climate change. So the ask are very similar, but we obviously identify them from federal, state, and local. I also have one other thing just to put on the record, is I do work on the task force with Noah Valenstein. It's the ecosystem restoration task force. It's where local, state, and federal come together. Both he and I have really been tag-teaming, saying, if we have an integrated delivery schedule, which is the 67 projects we have under SERP, if we have that schedule, we have a timeline when this is going to get done, we're either going to revise the timeline, because we're not getting funding, and tell the American people really when these projects are going to go through. So we're going back and up in October. I think that's essential, consistent with our ask, because really what we want to try to do is have a game plan. We have the playbook. We're just like building a house, as I told my city clerk today, it's building a house in the middle of construction, the bank says, I can't pay you, you're an extra. That's where we are in this whole project. That's as simple as I can identify it for you all.
Right, right. Thank you. Council, what, questions or comments?
No, I'd just like to thank Kevin, thank you for proverbial carrying the water for us here in southwest Florida, and also the city of Sanibel for allowing you the time and the means to do that. So thank you very much.
I appreciate it. This has been my priority, as anyone that's known me, this is obviously impacts, you know, when you're surrounded by water, as you're on Sanibel, but more importantly, it affects everybody. I've heard from more people last year, people up in the clear water area, people that you never even imagined that I'd hear from. By the way, they have Red Tide, they have dead fish, how do we deal with this? So it starts to really with our compact that we did in 16, 163 cities, I've heard from more than 250 cities at this point in time. So it's just important to everyone, this is just a team effort. I'm just happy that someone's giving me the ball, and I'm the quarterback at the moment.
And if you need any help, I mean, I'm willing to do whatever, the mayor knows that.
Fred?
Yeah, Kevin, earlier in your presentation, you were talking about the importance of septic tank conversion, and Benita Springs Utilities, which is, we franchise, we, we hold the franchise, so to speak, they do the work, they got the money, but they've up-fronted money to get shovel-ready plans for converting, I think it's 50 septic tanks that are very, very close, like a stone's throw from the Imperial River, the headwaters of the Imperial. Can, if, if, can I put together somebody that you can recommend that we can talk to to get in on getting help on supporting these grants?
If you bring any information to me, I'll certainly try to channel it, and the various funnels we do, the funding is certainly there, and the governor's certainly looking for any type of additional assistance. But this is, you know, when it comes to septic, listen, it's going to be a bold initiative, we're going to have to identify what's obviously the most important, and we're going to need funding sources from the federal, and the state, and the county, and the local. I mean, let's be realistic in that regard. I live in a city that we took on the initiative, we're 100% seaweed, that's a very expensive project. I could tell you the bonding, you know, really almost brought Sanibel to its knees. I could tell you the bonding, you know, really almost brought Sanibel to its knees, associated with other debt, because you just have to run as a city. So I caution you to make sure we do what we can. I also have to be aware of communities that are in uncorporated county that just don't have the wherewithal to do that. We need to identify the breaches, the leaches, the items that we really need to take care of right away. So I just caution everyone in that regard. We can't eat the whole elephant by itself.
We have a whole lot of other ones, but those drain right into the river, basically.
And those would be obviously, you know, first...
Be your number one, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Peter?
Thanks, Kevin. We also have other projects that are identified, have been identified by the Army Corps of Engineers as part of the Southwest Florida Feasibility Plan related to SERP, for which we have not received any money. So I think it would behoove us to, as a council, figure out what our priorities are with respect to these water quality things, whether it's that, whether it's the, is it 55 septic tanks, whether it's both, and collectively talk about it and then come to you as an advocate for it. So thanks for your advocacy. It's...
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Counsel, Laura?
Well, no, just thank you, your team, the other mayors that are going with you and their teams, and I love it, like, you're just like a dog, a dog with a bone, and you're not going to give up. So please, keep going, go strong.
Thanks.
It was heartbreaking last year. Honestly, I get to wake up every morning and, you know, why do you live down here, the quality of life, go out and grab a cup of coffee, sit on my dock, and I want to throw up? Not really the way I want to live.
Dynamite. Thank you very much for the great work. I obviously enjoy working with you, and we get a lot done, and we've got, we've come a long way, and we've got a long way to go, and your team, and my team, and everybody's team has given us the latitude to, like you say, be a dog with a bone and go ahead. So thank you, Kevin, for your leadership. Thank you for everything. We're all growing in the same direction, and as I've said before, I honestly believe the stars, the moons, the earth, and the planets are finally, finally about to line up for us, but that didn't happen by accident because of leadership like you, so thank you.
If you would be so kind to pass what I gave you, I'm just asking each council that this initiative, if you could actually make a motion, approve it, pass it. I'm just trying to have each city to do so. Cape Coral, Fort Myers have done so so far, but I'm going around.
Make a motion.
I'll second to that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
And you get results on the barrelhead, see? There you go, so...
I thank you very much. If I could be of any assistance, you all know my cell phone, feel free to do so. This is an issue I honestly believe, together, we're going to get this done. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Mayor Wayne. Thank you. Okay, we're now going to move on to Item A, which is a presentation by Waldrup Engineering on the design plan for Benita Springs Community Park Baseball Complex Master Plan Phase One Design, and this is green sheet 1909-280. And for folks with the water quality, that green sheet, if somebody wants to look at it at home or didn't see it, it's 1909-299. But Waldrup, folks?
I'd ask Nicole Perino to come forward and introduce Waldrup, please.
Great. Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning. Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director for the Record. Since May, the park staff, myself, as well as the Little League Board, has been working with Waldrup on preparing a master plan for a community park. Mainly, the focus is on the baseball complex. You will see that it's broken down into different phases, and Waldrup will get into that. But what you'll also see for Phase One, which is the detail they're going to give today, we have broken that down into A and B, and the reason behind that is we are working around the Little League schedule. We're trying to not interrupt any sort of fall ball, spring ball, so we are working around their schedule. But with that being said, I will turn it over to Bill Pricey with Waldrup.
Thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome.
Good morning, folks. I'm Bill Pricey with Waldrup Engineering, Senior Landscape Architect, and with me is Will Hellman. He's our Project Landscape Architect at Waldrup as well. As Nicole presented, we're here to talk about pretty much the working master plan with the park in itself and largely the Phase One improvements. And I'd like to kind of jump to, with the context of the presentation we'll be today, it's talking largely about the master plan and the initial phasing that we're doing in Phase One. And I like to call this a working master plan because it really is a living and breathing element, more so than a final master plan. We really believe that a master plan needs to have some flexibility built into it so that it can be flexible and move forward as programming needs and demographics change through time. I'm also going to get into the existing conditions, our Phase One demolition, the improvements for Phase One, which have been broken down into an A and B, and again, that was largely really to work through the renovations to be consistent and conducive to the Little League baseball season. As you know, when you're renovating existing uses, you've got to be sensitive to those ongoing functions, and we're trying to do that in breaking Phase One into two parts. And we'll talk a little bit about the future improvements as well. This is it, giving you an idea of the master plan itself as it was conceived. It was largely geared towards really looking at the heart of this particular community park, which is the baseball complex. It's not to say it's the only element or the only driving element, but it is a key element of the park, and we really came into... Okay, yeah, right here is, right here is working from the core element and expanding out through it and bringing in the other elements in the park that really bring this community park together as an overall park system. You really, you have the baseball complex in itself, you have the basketball pavilion up here with future expanded parking that would be associated here that would service both the baseball complex and the basketball facility in itself. Sorry about that. Trying to get these buttons down right. Bear with me. We also have the tennis pavilion, tennis courts over here with the playground element, which is largely used as well by the community. We, of course, have the community center in itself, which the programming elements associated with this. And also, this probably when it was put into the park was just a functional drainage area that was built for stormwater purposes, but the way it was built really lends itself to a lot of space on the outside, which through master planning and design of this park creates somewhat of a passive element that can be used in part of the park programming. So you have the active baseball court, you have the basketball court, you have the tennis playground, the community center, and you also have what could be through future planning as a passive element where people can go in and use that aspect of the park. The phasing for this is really brought into bringing the master plan together. And again, Phase One is really looking at the heart of it. I'm going to circle back to this program at the tail end of this as we roll through it, so I can talk a little more specific to this, because you may have some questions, I'm sure, with the context of the program. But Phase One is really coming into starting the essence of the park as you come into the concession area, is making the function work a little better and bringing some of the optics and the landscaping into it so that there is some really visual evidences and some aesthetics that are going to be brought into the park in Phase One. Phase One B really is working into the core complex in itself, and the driving force of that is the ADA compliance of the baseball court. If anyone's been in there right now, as that facility was built, it's asphalt, it's raised in there, it's not conducive to ADA activity, it's really not even conducive to mauling around for use when people are, when there are active baseball games going on with residents in there. Part of that is going to be the stormwater improvements and some of the aesthetic improvements to the pedestrian circulation in there, and also some additional landscaping elements. Phase Two is getting into really the ball fields themselves, some of the additional landscape treatments that'll bring the optics and the aesthetics of the park more into focus, and also bringing some front door aspects to Pine and Terry Street. Really, you drive down Terry Street right now, and you really don't even know there's this community asset sitting back behind there. So getting a front door to some degree, or a statement on Terry Street that there is a community asset back there is an important part of that master plan. Phase Three is really getting into the batting cages, the ballpens, a lot of the elements with the baseball facility in itself, turning some of the afterthought stormwater areas into low-impact design areas where they actually become really more aesthetic and functional design elements to give more of a natural aspect to the park in itself. That will probably require some, or possibly some environmental resource permitting with the district and some permitting aspects. That's a little more of a longer-term aspect of the park in itself, and also adding some T-ball facilities in there that the Little League would desperately like to have. Phase Four is jumping down into really looking at the concession building itself, you know, how that building would be renovated and whatever architectural treatments may be made to that building to bring up the aesthetic value of it. Also in there is bringing in a lot more of the pedestrian circulation throughout the park, and then Phase Five is really looking more into that passive element around the lake in itself. These are some of just the initial imaging that was coming in with the master plan. It shows kind of the way the core element can change, be more, a little more modernized. T-ball, bringing in some passive elements along the lake, and the nature of the way park systems work, where you have walkways, trees, and lawn. And again, we see the elements of bringing aesthetics into this park really more a function of make it more conducive and recreational for people to walk through the park. Largely, we have lawn and trees and palms, not using a lot of shrubbery and material that would be very difficult and very expensive for the parks department to maintain over a period of time. These are some 3D images that we've come up with, and these are really the two, these are the Phase One, the Phase One A elements, I'm sorry, that are going to be implemented in the project. This is a view looking down along the existing parking lot towards Pine Street, which would be a pedestrian concourse that would ultimately connect over Pine Street, and it would transition to a nodal point that brings you into the main course and to the ball field. So this is kind of giving you an element of what Phase One A is going to look like. The existing conditions of the field, again, we're really concentrating at least on these initial phases on the baseball complex itself. As you can see, that it appears that when the county built this facility initially, that fields two and four, I'm sorry, two and four were really multi-use fields. They built those for multi-use applications. As we know, in sporting elements, when you build multi-use facilities, they're usually not really great for either use. So really getting this park back into being more of a baseball-centric facility is going to, that'll be related in getting these ball field fences built back into a more professional proportion, but this gives you an idea of what is there existing right now. In Phase One, the demolition is really going to be limited to some field work. This fencing out here on Ball Field Four, sorry, that's Ball Field One, on Ball Field One is basically, there's an inner fence that was built for Little League use. This outer fence is really not used at all right now, so we're going to take that out. It actually gives us a lot more opportunities to create the Phase One A sidewalk, which will come through here, and also more open space for future T-ball that can fit in these spaces here. So it actually provides more use and a better relationship between the fields and the park itself. The core itself, this area here right now is going to get pretty much tore up in its entirety, and taking out some of these backstops that giving us a little more space in here is conducive to making the circulation work a little better and to make the drainage work. Phase One improvements is pretty much in this area as indicated by this black line. It's going to come in and create Phase One A as the walkway in here. Phase One B is really renovating and changing the inside of the complex, making the drainage work, making the pedestrian circulation work better, the aesthetics work better, and the functionality of it completely work. Again, this is more Phase One A, is really is the sidewalk connections here and some landscape treatments to show some of the initial aesthetics that will be part of the overall programming of the master plan. This is really, again, as Nicole brought up, we're breaking Phase One A and Phase One B up so that this works inside of the Little League season. We're trying to do our best not to disrupt their operations, but Phase One A would really be the sidewalks here, the landscapes, these are Royal Palms, we have some Silver Bosmarcus here, and this is an oak tree node because there's an existing oak tree right here, and we're using these circular elements along the walkways as nodal points. They're just kind of design elements as you're walking through pedestrian circulation paths in a park, you hit these and you know that you've come to a nodal point, a transitional point. This would take us to the future walkway that comes up into the back end here and feeds to T-ball courts. This also comes down and links into the existing sidewalks that are adjacent to the tennis courts. This would come down and link to a future pathway that would come south and also where the playground is on that side. Phase One B is really getting into the renovation of the core complex, and that is coming in here and pretty much taking everything out. And we worked real closely with the league on this to get a feel for what they were looking for, what were some of the downsides and the improvements they could see from the existing facility, and we could make it better. So we're looking at making the relationship of all the seating areas to be central more towards where home plate is, that's tend to be where people like to sit, is right here where the action is around pitcher and home base. These are also gets people closer into the function of the concession building and the restrooms themselves. We have the dugouts out here on the outer edges of the field where they're more down the base field lines, where coaches like to be, and to get players on and off the field. Also, there's a little bit, we have the access to the, the dugouts would be over here on the outside, it gives us a little more separation from the parents and the kids, and as a coach, you like to have that when you're, when the games are ongoing. Other activities in here are also that this is pretty much now all concrete in here with a paver walkway in here that kind of defines the concourse and the connectivity throughout the project, so it gives it some aesthetic value. And then this comes in here, this is scored concrete versus asphalt. Then there are future score tables that would be in these locations here in future phases, and that gives you kind of the feel for what the new renovation of that core complex would be. Again, this is giving kind of a little more of an overview of what the future improvements would be. Some of the later phases is bringing the outfield fences into a more proportional, professional baseball type of use where it's not a multi-use facility anymore. As you can see, changing the fence line over here, it gives us the opportunity for the T-ball fields on this side, the changing of the cavernous outfield that is in Ball Field Two right now gives us some of the opportunity for some open space elements over here as well. There wouldn't be as much a need there as a existing softball pitchers wall out here right now. Later phases would have bullpens that would be built into the facility right here, and that's basically just, just some pitching rubber, some bases, and some fencing around it to give the opportunity that you'd actually have a ball field, a bullpen on each of the ball fields, which the leagues would desperately like to have. The ancillary benefit of the location of these bullpens on this fencing layout is that there could be cross fencing right here that could secure the facility during off hours, that this actually, the core of this area could be secured, protected from vandalism. With this, I want to kind of leave this to the last phrase here, and I'll go through a little more of the nature of the phasing of it. Phase One being, Phase One again being this part right here, Phase One B being the core element of it. Getting into Phase Two is really coming in and changing all the ball field, putting in new fencing, some of the fencing there is not in the greatest shape, but also it's giving us the opportunity to change, change some of the fencing relationships that needed to be for the expansion in here, and it gives us this proportionality and this kind of the nature of the park, the park in here. Part of that that's not shown in here would be the Pine Street improvement here, and also down on Terry Street, there could be some wavefinding elements so people will know that you've arrived at the park. Phase Three is getting more into where we have the bullpens, the upgrade of the batting cages themselves, getting into the permitting, and also this is what we talked about earlier when I mentioned, the low-impact design drainage elements is coming in here, is creating this in here as a function of making this look a little more naturalistic, bringing plant material in as part of the drainage, and that's known as low-impact design, and it actually would give the park much more of a natural, natural feel, and plus, when you're inside of the park, it gives you a little more containment against the outside of Pine Street and out here. The nature of the park in here is basically is to be a little more open, a lot of trees and palms and turf areas, but the heavier landscaping would be on the perimeters to give you the sense of containment within the park itself. Phase Four, it would be whatever renovations would be determined necessary and appropriate at the concession building itself, and then Phase Five is getting into creating the boardwalk And then Phase Five is getting into creating the boardwalk piers and the nature passive trails around the park. So that kind of is as the master plan is shown right now, is the long-term plan and the Phase One implementation that we're getting, we're a good start.
Great. Thank you very much. Counsel, Pete?
Yeah, thank you. So when I hear Anthony get up and say the Little League likes it, I'm happy about that because, you know, in terms of batting cages and the whole setup mechanically, whatever you want to call it, I think that's, you know, they're kind of our eyes and ears on the ground, they're the users of the facility. However, not however, and, I'd like a presentation, more to Arlene than to Waldrop, I'd like a presentation on what the whole thing is going to look like aesthetically. In other words, what we've heard in this presentation is, well, there'll be some wave finding here, there'll be some planting here, there won't be so much planting that we'd have to worry about upkeep. In my view, obviously, cost is an issue, but in my view, this, this should be a world-class local sports facility. When, you know, when you go into the Estero Community Park, it looks beautiful. When you go into Cambeer Park, it looks beautiful. When you go into Fort Myers Little League, looks pretty nice. Also, I see Chris Corey back there, you know, Chris brought a bunch of people over from having to be Benita Bay, who had participated in some other fundraising around town, and the notion was, not to promise too much, hopefully on the back of an aspirational presentation of what this will look like, we could get private money to help support it. So I guess that's my request to city management, that we have a presentation, not like it's back in Section Five to about the wave finding is going to look like, but what, I heard when I was away, there was a great presentation of something else with, was it on Logan, Fred? Of an overview? Yeah?
It was renderings.
Renderings, yeah, that we could have something that is like, wow, when you go in, this is what it's going to look like, and of course, what it's going to cost. So that's my request. It's not inconsistent with what's been presented here today, but I'd like to see that rather sooner than later. That's my comment.
Okay, great. Counsel, Fred?
What's the other uses that this area has been, been used for since there's been a multi-use?
What other uses? Well, there is, I'll let Matt, really let Nicole speak to that.
In terms of the fields, there hasn't been another use. When the county did build fields, our softball field, which is Field Two, or sorry, Field Four and Field Two, they were made a lot larger than they needed to be, just so they could be used as multipurpose. But over the years that we've found, Little League has mainly been the user of these as well as outside organizations coming in for baseball, softball, that we really need to bring those two fields back into the dimensions and elements that they really need to be.
Okay.
I remember ages ago, we had a presentation where, I think it was FPL, they would put in and maintain and build these solar covers. Do you remember? Like, they looked like trees, but they were solar lights and they provided shade. I was just wondering if that, I don't remember, I mean, it sounded perfect, they were going to maintain, so, too good to be true, I don't know the details because we never, as a council, pursued it, but I was just wondering if maybe we could pursue it there and just find out what the terms are from them.
We can reach out to them. That was a project through the Art and Public Places Board. We can look at them again, or no, it was actually the bicycle pedestrian.
No, it was a, it was a presentation by FPNL. They wanted to expand their.
They did come to one of the boards though first, I believe, as well, but that's something that we can look into.
I would say, Laura, Matt, Matt here and I happened to happen upon one of those up by Barto.
Uh huh.
Pretty funky.
Oh, really?
That's just one person's view. You would have sent the pictures around about a year or two ago, you probably still have them on your cell phone. They were outside this.
I'll have to check.
All right.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe you burnt them. Sorry.
Okay, well, just, we'll just.
We also wanted to give.
Yes, Arlene.
Just a very quick update is that we are continuing to work, Ellie's continuing to work with the Minnesota Twins on the completion of, of the ball field grant that we have. We're progressing well, and by September 30th, we're planning on having that project complete. So we'd like to plan something with the council, with the Little League, and possibly with the Wounded Warriors when they're visiting with us for a groundbreaking ceremony with that. And we understand that the Minnesota Twins would like to participate with us in that as well, so.
Okay, great. Counsel, anything else? Nicole? Okay, wonderful. Thank you, everybody. We're going to move on to Item B now, which is a presentation by DPZ Co-Design on Form Based Code and Updated Renderings for Bamboo Parcel, and this is Green Sheet 1909-284. Yes, Arlene?
Jackie Jensen to take the lead.
Yes, yes, Jackie. Hi, how are you?
Hey, Council, great, thank you for asking. So here today, we do have DPZ Co-Design. As you may recall, back in August, we did bring some key items for your direction on. We have communicated that to DPZ. So along with that and some public input, they are here today to present their updated renderings and an update on the final draft of the Form Based Code. Just to let you know, staff is still reviewing that draft, but we're pretty confident we can start moving forward. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. I'm Galina Tachiva, managing partner at Co-Design, DPZ Co-Design in Miami. So today, I was told to be short, not an hour presentation, but like 10, 15 minutes. It's always difficult, but we'll manage. So I will present a very brief overview of the revised final draft of the Form Based Code for the downtown of Bonita Springs. The overall document is about 70 pages. We hope that we can trim a little bit more fat, so it's a little bit even trimmer. It is a little bit long because there are a lot of illustrations. We decided, together with you at our last meetings, which we had in June at the council meeting, and then later in July, we had an informal staff meeting, more internal meeting, staff meeting plus some of the council members and the mayor, that we need to illustrate the intentions of the code to a higher extent. The numbers and the tables and the words are important, but, you know, the illustrations also matter. Not necessarily that every single line in the illustrative material is, is basically compulsory, but it gives an idea about the intentions of the code and through using, using the bamboo parcel as an example of how we can implement some of these elements in the Form Based Code. So I gave around the updated Bonita Bamboo Parcel Collection. We had three options for your review before, and we illustrated to a higher extent the most dense one and the least dense one. You know, the third, the one in between was left as it was before, but we wanted to show a kind of the variety of building types, the colors, the proportions, the importance of the shaping of the pedestrian space, the pedestrian, the pedestrian street and the kind of the common public areas. I will start with the code. Last time, we, we approved, actually, you approved, the new boundaries of the downtown Form Based Code with certain expansion, and then going through the different illustrative drawings which go together with the urban design standards. We have several zones, and I kind of skipped this a little bit too fast. You know, the darker, the darker blue is the T5 core, which is basically our most intense urban area. On some of those areas, you see a red line, which is the transit zone, the T5 core, where we will have mandatory retail, commercial frontage, galleries, restaurants, cafes, and a gallery frontage. Gallery meaning that it will be a shaded structure on the, over, over the sidewalks. So this is an important element. Then we have a T5, which is the regular urban center zone where the gallery is not required, and it can be also residential use. And then we have, we have the T4 zone, which is the more relaxed, mixed, mixed-use buildings, some attached residential, small apartment buildings. And then the T3, where we have two categories, and they are, one is more restricted, T3 restricted, and the other one is the T open. The restricted is usually coincides with the historic properties, the historic neighborhoods, and the T3 is the single-family residential. So these are the illustrations. I'm not going to go in detail describing what the parameters are unless you have questions. We decided last time that it will be a good idea to have actually two illustrations for this particular, the T5 core area, where we were showing the possibility with the gallery, a kind of a continuous gallery, and then some areas where we will have covered, you know, the shaded, the shading of the street will be with deep awnings or other, other ways, like trees, for example, and other, you know, if we, there is a sitting area, maybe umbrellas or other ways. These are renderings which we included, like at a street level, so it's clear what the gallery looks like. It is very important that it is a very fine and thin structure, that it doesn't obstruct the retail, the storefronts, the signage. There are many mistakes which have been done recently around the country when you put really thick, big columns. It very rarely works well for retail, so we recommend that this structure is, is really looked upon very carefully when projects come, come along, so that the retail is well kind of visible, and also for shading, and also for the purpose of cost efficiency. You know, the thick and big arcades and galleries are just very expensive, not necessary, and actually, they usually harms the street life. And then we have the T5 core where we have an interrupted, uninterrupted frontage without the, without the gallery. And then the next one, these are some of the renderings which we included to illustrate what can happen on the Bonita, on the bamboo site. We have updated the floodplain line, which actually allows for a really larger, more present park land along the, along Imperial River, as, on the side, on the south side, it's a more active pedestrian street with buildings underwater, cafes and restaurants, and on the other side, it's more naturalistic type of walkway with a large park towards, towards the east. This is the more intensive, the more intensive proposal, with basically two parking garages on the south and the north end, which maximizes the use of the site with a maximum number of units above, it's above 100, 112 units. Retail square footage is, you can see them in the, in the report, about 60,000 square feet. But the intention is that a great pedestrian environment is created along the street with small, smaller facilities like restaurants or cafes on the water, with of course, allowing views, allowing views of the water, with a lot of sitting, retail on one side and cafes on the other side. And then this is basically a view along Old 41, the upper, the upper rendering. You can see the, the buildings, they're three and four stories, where they go to four stories. There is a setback at the third floor. There are deep awnings on the ground floor. There are gaps between the buildings, even if this is a kind of a fairly large structure, at least in the first option where we have the garage and it's lined with buildings, but they are in the shape of courtyard, so they read as if they are, they are detached buildings. So that's a kind of a nice way to, to hide the, the parking, the larger structure in the back. And you can have, you know, trees in the middle or shaded areas for restaurants, cafes, or retail. There is a tower, proposal for a tower. These are, these are all illustrative, and we hope that some of these materials can be helpful to the, to the documents which you are preparing for the RFP on the property. And below is an illustration of the park on the north side of the river, you know, just a kind of initial idea of the connection with a pedestrian bridge, a small gazebo, and the parkland. And then this is the second, actually, this was the third option, the least intense option, where we proposed a parking garage. It is only two levels on the south side, and then on the north side, there is no parking garage at all. These are live work units, attached housing, which actually accommodate their parking on, on, on their lots. It is a similar treatment on the river edge, more intense and more commercial on the south and more passive and, you know, kind of jogging and naturalistic type of space on the north side. This is how it looks from a kind of a far away. And the, you know, you can see that the, the street, the street view is similar, you know, probably the scale of the buildings is a little bit smaller. We took note about the use of colors, the colors which we're proposing in the Form Based Codes. Basically, we accommodated here, we illustrated and maybe a little bit to a high extent, you know, the full palette of, of the pastel colors available. And then this is an illustration along 41 with three stories, three-story buildings. You may think that they look quite massive, but 41, Old 41 has a pretty good right-of-way, and we suggest and we actually recommend that the ground floors really are with high ceiling heights, you know, not only for, not only for the accommodating commercial uses, but also for future accommodation of if you begin to raise infrastructure in the future, this will be, this will be, you know, coming actually practical, as we have seen in other places around the country. And I believe that we have included also some three-dimensional representation of street sections along Old 41 with the different allowable street heights, I mean, building heights, you know, from two, three, combination of two and three stories all the way to four stories with the, with the accommodated setbacks. And then we have, I mean, there is basically a walkthrough, the other, the other T zones, the T4 zone, which is, as I said, the most diverse one with the live works, townhouses, attached housing. How it will look from the street, there is also the possibility of, oh, I'm sorry, this is the T, the T5 still, with the possibility of accommodating commercial and residential. Then this is the T4 where we begin to see the buildings a kind of detaching, even if apartment building, it can be, you know, two or three stories, looking more like a mansion, like a residential, like a single-family house, larger, larger in size, but it can be very well accommodated next to a house or a duplex or a townhouse. And this is how the street can look. These are the interesting kind of contributions of this Form Based Code. This is an assemblage in T4 zone where we allow for the, kind of the maximum density up to almost 20 units to the acre, but they're clustered along pedestrian green areas, we call them cottage courts. And these, we also, another, another change from the last time you saw this code is that we added this type of a single-family house courts in the T3 zone, which is coming up here, the single-family, the single-family area predominantly. And these are when you can create these semi-private green spaces with pedestrian, with basically pedestrian street all around with the smaller scale buildings, the one and two-story single-family housing. So this is something new which we, which we added. And the T3 restricted stays most stable and in most cases without major changes. So these are the notes which I wanted to go through if you have any questions, please.
Yeah, counsel, any questions at this point?
Arlene, what are you asking for here? Oops, there she goes.
So at this point, DPZ, this is their final, final draft, and we would like the opportunity with staff to continue to make any changes review as well. Under the guise of that we do need to do a comprehensive plan amendment in order to adopt these land development code changes, a little bit later, this, in this meeting, you will have the state mandated changes for our comprehensive plan, which are required before we can do any other changes. We have been working with Dr. Banion on the downtown as well, and so our hopes is, is that, I understand that we should hopefully hear back sometime in November from the state on the approval of the state mandated changes. We would be planning to come to the very next council meeting with the comprehensive land amendment for the downtown, and I've been talking with Derek that we could hopefully simultaneously review the land development code at the same time, so that you can move forward to an adoption together through the process.
I move to approve what she said.
Second? There's been a motion and a second. Is there, to spur the discussion or question? Yeah, Mike?
I had a question on page 23. It says that Cottage. It says that cottage court is for T4 but also allowed in T3 at appropriate density. What sets the appropriate density? Is it the rights that they have right now under the code or?
We are for the, where does it say?
It's under the, your rendering on page 23.
Yes. Yes, these are, this, this is the massing model. This, the allowed density is up to 20 units to the acre in the cottage in this particular configuration, not in the rest of the T4 zone.
Yeah, but, but it says it's also allowed in T3 at the appropriate density. What sets the appropriate density in the?
Oh, for, for T3, we have, I, I think it's another page where the densities are, and they're on page 11, where we say that T3, the appropriate densities are maximum for the restricted are six units to the acre and T3 maximum 10 units to the acre, the open, T3. So this is on page 11.
Is that the rights that the property owners have right now or are we changing that?
I believe that we are within the, within the allowable, yes.
The way that this is drafted is within the current comprehensive plan, correct?
Yes, we never, we never go above the 20 units to the acre and we keep the bonuses intact, so we have basically up to 15 units plus the bonus for the higher, for the higher densities, for T5.
Okay, but the areas that are T3, we're not reducing any density that they currently have?
I don't believe we are reducing anything.
Their, their discussion with DPZ was there for them to stick within the existing densities permitted in the current comprehensive plan.
Laurie, did you have something? No? Fred?
No, no questions this time.
Okay.
I had one more question on the, on the building heights. On the T5, we have, you have it in there is a four stories max. What, what's the Terry Street assemblage? Was that four stories overparking?
Four stories.
Oh, that's four stories total?
I believe it's four stories.
So we're staying consistent there?
Yeah. I mean, we heard loud and clear that you didn't want to be, you know, Bonita Springs in other areas, like with the much taller buildings that you need to, you would like to keep the character of the smaller scale development at four stories, so we kept the stories. But we, one thing we changed was that it will be by number of stories and not by, by height.
And the, the galley on the T5 core, that's actually coming over, like our current sidewalks that we have now?
Yes.
So that's not like the property line and then the property, the building setback further, that, that's actually coming out over?
Exactly. And with the gallery, because it's on, it's, it is basically, you don't put the building on top, it's not an arcade, it will be, you know, easier to, to build, I guess.
And in your renderings, it looked like it was kind of, it could be used as like a porch or patio on top of the gallery?
Yeah, that, this, this can be used, absolutely, yeah. Or, you know, planting or for solar panels.
Fred? Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, there, there is one question. I know we've, at the moment, limited the heights to stories and I don't have a problem with that, except I think there's a notable area that we should consider making an exception. Parking garages. Parking garages have an exceedingly low finish floor to finish floor height. You can take, get at least one and maybe two more stories of parking garage for an area that you allow four-story building. And parking is something that Old 41 area, downtown, whatever you want to call it, it is not flush with parking. Parking garages by their very nature are expensive and one economy is, is getting an extra floor or two on that footprint. I think we may want to consider at least on parking garages, coming up with an exception that they can be, they're, they're limited by an overall height or something like that.
Yes, that's, this is a possible, however, the parking garage is usually, because we use their, their last level, you know, you usually get, you know, the full, you can have five levels of parking with four stories. So that's the beauty of it. And when you, we don't recommend garages above five stories because, five levels, because it's, it, people don't like to.
Yeah, and all I'm saying is that if we allow the heights of what four-story other buildings are, you can really get much more than, you can at least get one more floor plus that top story. Now, top story's got to have a, a wall around it of about four or five feet so somebody can't fall off or drive off or whatever, anyway. Just something to think about, but I think we should.
We can look at it.
Think about it because it's, we can get more bang for the buck. I know some developers have told me that if we can build some things on top of a parking garage, we'll, we'll build two floors for their use and give the city the right to use the other two stories of parking and then have something on top of it. So I think that's an area we want to look at.
So that's in here now? You could like, if we're capped at four stories, a parking garage could be five because you have the top level?
Exactly.
But, but it's written in there that way?
We, I don't think that we specified it anywhere, but it's, you know, four stories is four stories, but you count five levels. You can accommodate five levels of parking. I don't think that we specified it.
But what if somebody views it later as four stories meaning four levels of parking and not parking?
We may have to clarify that, yeah, we should clarify then about the parking garages. Yeah, I don't think that we have text clarifying this.
So we have three proposals here, three ideas, three, walk, walk us forward here.
So, so, well, we have got two phases here. One is, is this is the, you're, you're receiving the draft of the form-based code and that's a step we'll move forward with the comprehensive plan. Secondly, you have some proposals of, of renderings for the bamboo parcel for your consideration. I don't know that we, you have a second presentation coming next from CBRE as to whether, how we're going to market the property. You may want to discuss at that point how you, how, what flexibility you want to leave within your RFP, do you want to put all proposals in? That's a, that's a policy decision, you can probably decide when we're going into the RFP process. But I think at this point, these are the recommendations from DPZ. Of course, it is, these are all draft forms and you'd want to continue to get feedback from a potential developer on those as well.
Right, okay.
And also their illustrative materials, you know, these are the, you know, the options which we came up with. What is important and which will be actually probably permanent is the floodplain outline where the park and the public land will remain intact and no matter what the project around is.
And that was important to illustrate in these was where the floodplain was and then the feedback we had received that there were public access to the river.
Any other counsel, any questions? Greg, are you, everybody's good? Okay. Dynamite, well, thank you, unless you have other comments or questions or? Yeah, okay, so we have a proposal, motion to accept in a second, for, obviously for further discussion. Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you. Peter, yes?
Just a quick comment after the vote, which is, I want to thank Alina, I mean, people don't realize this, but we have the top of the league tables here today, not just nationally but perhaps internationally. So thank you for your personal focus on this as well as the entire team at DPZ.
Javier and Paul.
Javier, yeah, I'm looking for him. Yeah, great job, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And if you don't think they're international, listen to their accents. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Item C is we're going to receive a presentation by CBRE to prepare and market an RFQ/RFP for the development of the bamboo parcel to analyze received submittals and to provide recommendations as to the benefits and concerns of each proposal and provide direction to staff. And this is green sheet 1909-285.
And Mayor and Council?
Welcome, yes.
This is under the direction of counsel for us to bring forward a consultant who can assist with the RFP/RFQ process. I just wanted to clarify for counsel that this organization you're going to hear from has a state contract that is current, that has a language within it that our city attorney has reviewed in regards, or assistance city attorney has reviewed in regards to, that a direct contract could be done under the existing state contract. So there is no additional RFP to.
We can piggyback.
To bring them on board.
Okay, welcome, good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mike McShay. I'm the executive vice president of CBRE's Public Sector Practice. I'm responsible for state and local government work that we do nationally. And with, with me today, two of my colleagues, Leanne Corst is the Southeast Regional Manager for our practice group, and Jeff Gage is our local market expert based here in Naples. And we're really grateful and pleased to be here today to tell you a little bit about our firm and how we would approach this project. So a little bit about CBRE, just briefly. We are the largest commercial real estate company in the world. We have something on the order of 90,000 employees. We operate out of 450 cities and 100 countries around the world, and you'll hear from Jeff in a little bit. We're closing sales transactional work around the globe at a billion dollars a day, so we're a very, very large company. And that, and that's not really, I, I don't mention that for any other reason other than for, for two things that I think you ought to know about. One is, is that there really is no real estate service specialty discipline that you all might need some help with, that we don't have an expert someplace resident inside of CBRE. The second thing that I would bring to your attention is that when, when we take a project on like the bamboo parcel or, or some of the other parcels that you may be considering downtown, we have the ability to reach out regionally, nationally, globally to literally thousands of investor developers. So what I can assure you of is that if we go through this project, if you do agree to engage us, you know, we will make sure that, that Bonita Springs and this project in particular is very, very widely marketed all across the, all across the nation. A little bit about our public sector practice. We call it Public Institutions and Education Solutions. It's a mouthful, but our acronym is PIES. And you can see that we are today, we're very, very active across the United States. We have about 80 cities, counties and states that we're representing for projects very similar to, to what you all are considering. We have at least 10 public-private partnerships going on here in the state of Florida today. You're going to hear a little bit about that. But the, the reason that this is important is that although real estate transactions are fairly similar from transaction to transaction, the, the way that the public sector works with real estate, the issues and the concerns that you all have in terms of public process, transparency, public interaction with the decisions that you're going to be making, you know, you're not governed by quarterly reports. You're governed by constituent services and a whole different set of priorities that our group is particularly sensitive to. The, so some of the public sector challenges that we see, and I'll just bring this to your attention because I feel like it's important that you do understand that we understand your world. Most of your peer group is looking at taking real estate assets such as the bamboo parcel and they're trying to monetize it in one fashion or another. They're trying to monetize it to, to generate capital. It could be a one-time source of capital that would go into the general fund, or they're looking at generating an income stream, a lot of times particularly for a very important parcels through long-term ground leases we're seeing. So that is something that you, I don't know that that's been decided upon yet, what the best course of action is, but we're familiar with either flat-out sale, fee simple sale or long-term ground leases, and we can help you navigate that. Most of our, most of your peer group, I would say, is dealing with aging infrastructure, whether it's stormwater or it's, you know, buildings that are starting to crumble down, replacement of city hall, those types of things. And they're using public-private partnerships to help underwrite and fund some of those initiatives. And so we've got a lot of experience with that and we're, you know, we're certainly looking forward to being able to help you figure out some of what you'd like to do here in the city. And then the last couple of bullet points, you know, the public use of land that may be ripe for redevelopment. You know, certainly you have the opportunity to really change the dynamic of what's happening downtown. It's a great property, it's a great parcel, and we think that it's going to have a lot of appeal in the marketplace. And we're, we're currently working with a couple of your neighbors, we're working at Fort Myers, we're working up in Cape Coral with similar initiatives. And so we're, I'll, I'll tell you, we're very grateful to be here and for the opportunity to tell you a little bit about what we can do to help you. And with that, I'm going to introduce my colleague Jeff Gage, who is here in the Naples area. He's going to tell you a little bit about the property and some of our thoughts regarding maybe values or, but certainly maybe uses. Jeff?
So people turn to me and they want to know about the transaction and, you know, how much you're going to get, how long is it going to take and what's it going to look like? I just had knee surgery two weeks ago, and one of the things I did when I was evaluating the surgeon who replaced my knee was, how many do you do a day, right? Mike mentioned we would close a billion dollars in transactions a day, that's a huge number. I've been in the business since 1985, I've closed over nine million square feet and that's almost three billion in, in total value. So point is, we've done this before and what we're doing is bringing a process to you that is going to deliver the desired result. A transaction is highest price, quickest to close and fewest conditions. It's easy. And there's a lot of ways to package those three results and we've, we've had that, that experience. So we're looking forward to getting started with you. Our process is designed to remove risk, so one of the worst things you can do, it's called buyer's remorse, is close on a transaction and then regret that you did it the next day. So Leanne's going to get into a little bit more of this, but you've got a very unique 5.3 acre site here. It's really the gateway to Bonita. It's the cornerstone of development of your downtown area. And so what we're going to do is to sell a vision to the, the national buying community. When we hit the return button after we prepare our marketing materials, it blitzes out to 500,000 qualified prospects. Some of those are going to be local, some of them are going to be regional, some may even be national. We don't know who we're going to get. But what we're going to deliver is a message that DPZ is going to help us put together, which creates this vision of what is Bonita Springs and what is this particular parcel and how does it fit into the big picture. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I mean, I, I've heard people say value. I, I don't know what the value is today. I can tell you that if you did 160,000 feet of development, which would consist of apartments and consist of retail, you know, roughly 112 units and 60,000 feet, you could be looking at $26 million. But that's not the total solution because we've got a parking garage too that needs to be factored into it. So it's a big project, but more important, it's a project that's going to be the focal point of your central business district. We're very pleased to be here to, to help you with that. I'll introduce Leanne, who will take you through how we bring the message to the world.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, I think you're going to regret the 26 million.
Yeah, I, you know, I was forced.
That's the total cost.
I haven't even, I haven't even gotten started on you. You weren't forced to do anything yet. Thank you, but thank you for that information.
Yeah, that's, that's total development value, not, not land. Thank you. So as Jeff said, I'm going to talk to you about how we would typically take a, a project like this to market. And, and I think what's important here is to know that it's a proven process, methodical that's been used in numerous cities, counties and states across the, across the country. And Mike mentioned Fort Myers and Cape Coral, I'm going to talk in particular about Cape Coral in just, in just a little bit, but it's a proven process and in the bottom right really is where I want to focus on this slide. And we will prepare world-class marketing materials. As Jeff said, we will make sure that our, our CBRE database is, is maximized and that opportunity is marketed all across the country. And it may be local developers that are interested, but in Cape Coral, for example, we went through a similar process and we had interest from Arizona to Minnesota to Pennsylvania as well as local. So it, the marketing reach does work. We would prepare those marketing materials on a parallel path to preparing the actual RFP that we would issue to the marketplace. And that RFP would importantly make sure that we are asking for information from, from developers that show they have both the experience and the financial capacity to perform. So we want to make sure that we vet those developers and only the qualified developers are shortlisted and, and negotiated with. Once that RFP is issued and we receive responses, we will then complete financial analysis. So we'll utilize CBRE's financial consulting group and we'll make sure that you have all of the financial data and information needed to make a selection. So this, these are some examples of recent experience and you can see that it's everything from very small cities to really large cities. And the, the property, the second picture to, to the left is Cape Coral and it's seven islands and it's raw land in the Northwest Cape. And I'm sure you all are aware, the Northwest Cape is fairly undeveloped and we didn't quite frankly know how much interest we might get in this, in this pri- quite frankly know how much interest we might get in this, in this project. And the procurement's still open, so I can't talk about a lot of deep, about a lot of details. But we have three developers from various parts of the country that are preparing RFPs now and will submit them in November. The project in the middle is Mobile, Alabama, and again, interest from all across the country. And importantly, most of the developers that are from out of town that have been interested in this project have local partners. So, we see a lot of times, even if it's a national developer, they find a local partner because they need to understand the market and what the needs of Benita Springs community is. So, we heard from various stakeholders just already in spending time in Benita Springs that, you know, the property, the goal is development, obviously asset monetization, but it's to create a cornerstone on Old 41, old Florida kind of look and feel. DPZ's reflected that in their renderings. And our RFP would make, would make sure that we emphasize what you all want to accomplish, and it would be collaborative in terms of stakeholder input, certainly council's input, city staff, et cetera. So, it's not done in a vacuum. It's a very collaborative process. Our timeline, what we're thinking today is our timeline is that from the October, if you all approve the services of CBRE today, we would prepare marketing materials from October through November, issue those marketing materials November, December, make sure that the word gets out that the Bamboo site is an opportunity. And then, we would have the RFP actually ready to go just after the holidays in early January. We don't think it's a good idea to issue an RFP in the middle of the holidays. So, we would take advantage of the intervening period of time to actually get the word out, prepare those marketing materials, and be ready to hit the ground in early January releasing that RFP. We typically like to give developers 60 to 90 days to respond. They have to put together a development team, and we want them to put together thoughtful, creative proposals. So, that would put us in a probably April timeframe to receive those responses, evaluate them, and obviously come back to council with updates along the way and for decision-making at the end.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we're available to answer any questions you may have, any concerns or thoughts. Otherwise, we've been working with city staff, and we're ready to, ready to go pending your approval.
Sure. Greg?
Yeah.
I'll start with, Fred?
I'll go last.
All right. Go ahead, Fred.
I got two or three things. Number one, what was the acreage of the Cape Coral site?
It is, it's approximately 40 acres. But we have worked on everything from an acre to hundreds of acres.
Could you, for the benefit of the colleagues and the audience primarily, give kind of a little brief discussion of the pro and cons on when buying the site pretty quickly after the developers picked versus a long-term land lease?
Sure, sure. Okay, so, many of your peer group, you know, they, they have similar issues. They want to get as much for the property as they can. And, you know, a fee simple sale, a lot of cities are saying, we don't want to do that because the money goes into the general fund, it gets swept out, and we never see it again, and we don't get to benefit long-term from it. We solve some immediate maybe financial issues. So, a lot of the cities that we're working with are going to long-term ground leases. And so, they'll, we'll figure out what the fee simple value of the property is. We will then issue a ground lease against that value, and then the city benefits from that income stream for a very, very long time. Okay? So, that's the benefit, I think. You could go either way, but there are advantages and disadvantages to both. For the developer, though, for the developer, the fact that they would not have to come up with the millions of dollars of value that the land is today gives them a real financial incentive in a lot of cases to go with the, with the long-term ground lease because they don't have to come up with $2 million, $5 million, $10 million for the land.
Doesn't that also, developers a lot of times have more money to put in the project and the buildings they build and bells and whistles and all that?
They do, they do. They will have more money downstream or at the beginning of the project to, to invest into improvements if they don't have to buy the land upfront.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mike? I'm sorry, yes, please.
Thank you. I just want to quickly also add that the RFP will have, as a requirement, a timeline, a development timeline. And so, we'll want to understand how they're going to develop the project in phases and timelines and make sure that there are protections for the city so that they don't land bank and they actually develop according to the schedule that they put forth in their RFP response.
Great. Mike?
The $7,500 a month, when does that start? Like immediately or when the RFP goes out in January or immediately?
Yes, sir.
No, it's, yeah, it would start immediately upon the execution of a contract. And then, it's reimbursable.
Right. So, I could explain that. So, we do get paid along the way for the work that we do, but if we're successful, we bring a developer in. The developer actually will pay the fee, and we will credit back the $7,500 a month against the developer fee so that you all get reimbursed that money downstream. We try to make it easy for you to hire us, you know, but it also does protect us for out-of-pocket costs along the way.
Okay, great.
And the, the other percentage-based fee that gets paid by the developer, that comes out of what we get?
It gets paid by the developer, but I think everybody knows it's, you know, it's a cost of the transaction.
It's always coming out.
It's a cost of the transaction, and they'll take that into consideration in their pricing. But, you know, if a developer's really very interested, what we've found is that the market dictates the value of the property, and most of the sophisticated developers that we work with, they're very, you know, they're very comfortable with and understand the concept of the success fee and commissions to the representatives for the cities that we work with.
And the, the RFP will specify the fee, and it is completely transparent, and we'll want to see that in their pro forma when it comes back in.
And what happens if they wind up scaling back their project later? Like, we select them, they're at the $26 million valuation, but then, as things develop, they come back and say, look, you know, it's not really that feasible. We need to scale back to like 16 million, you know, a dollar project.
We, you know, we base the, we base our fee on the proposal that they offer up. You know, if market conditions should change at a, at a later date, that's really impossible for us to predict, you know? But as Leanne mentioned, it's all transparent and considered upfront.
Peter?
I got two things. One is, I think it's a no-brainer that we get the professional help. We need sophisticated professional help. Secondly, on the parking garage, you know, when Galena had, I think it's Scenario 1, Scenario 3, I'd be looking for CBRE's help and reflection after talking with them, city management, as to which is the best way to go. Also, I know we've had discussions in the past about the area where we call it Matt's bioreactor is maybe a possibility of parking garage there. I don't think we can solve that today, but the beauty of having professional help and figuring out relative values is that we'll get their professional advice with respect to it. And actually make a motion to approve as well.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, great. Thanks, Pete. Laura?
Um, okay. I think it was Dwight E., as in Eisenhower.
Eisenhower.
Who, who said, you know, just give us a ballpark. When you put out the marketing, do you, are you going to have a price on it?
Well, we, the value of your parcel will depend entirely on the density that you eventually permit on that site. It'll be driven by the number of units of residential that you offer up and the amount of retail that actually can be there. So, we've done some back-to-the-envelope studies, you know. We're a little bit hesitant to put that out because we just saw the drawings for the first time, but we have an idea of what it should be. And, you know, part of our responsibility to you all is to make sure that, you know, we do accurately reflect. We'll know in advance what the questions are and what the value should be before it goes to market. You know, I will tell you, though, the land is just, you know, one element of it. You know, the overall development, the $26 million that we talked about, that's the investment that you want. That's, you know, that's where things really start to make a difference. If you need somebody or want somebody just to put a sign up, you know, and sell a piece of property, that's pretty easy to do. You know, the real, the real, I think, art in this transaction is finding that developer that believes in Benita Springs, that wants to do something really different and really special in your community, and that's what we're looking to do.
And prior to going to market, we intended to have one-on-one conversations with each council to walk through the marketing so that everyone understands where we are before we come to the council meeting.
No, I agree with Councilman O'Flint said. We need the experts.
Great. Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, along the same lines as Mike. I mean, I know it's fee-based and protection. I guess my question is, is what is you, what is your company's like turnaround time? What's the average? What are we looking at on timeline here? I know you're looking at, you know, going out to RFP in January, then, you know, 60 to 90 days, so you're talking April, May. Are we talking, before we see a sale or even an offer, we're talking June, July, August? What are we talking? Then, after that timeline of, you know, groundbreaking and, and return on investment, I guess, is my question.
So, the timeline we shared with the mayor this morning, we typically can move faster, CBRE can move faster than a city can in term, but because of required approvals and, and all that sort of thing. That said, our typical process.
Sounds accepted by.
Yeah. Our typical, our typical process would be nine months to have the bid go out, market, bid go out, and have responses come back in. So, that puts us at April for bid responses. We would be back before you in May to share an overview of the shortlisted firms. And then, it's a couple of months to prepare development agreements, and groundbreaking is going to depend on what they want to build and the timeline they propose. We have seen this process, and Mike and I are doing several big, big projects over Miami. We have seen this process go as quickly as six months for a recent project in Jacksonville to three years in Miami because it had to go to voter referendum and various other requirements. So, six months is on the short end, three years is, is on the long end, but we are projecting a timeline for you that we think is accomplishable and reasonable.
And execution from the time a contract is issued, you know, then they have to complete design. Okay? That's going to take months. And then, they have to go through the permitting process. That's a local thing that you all will have a lot of control over in terms of permitting, et cetera. So, you know, normally after contract execution, we don't see a shovel on the ground for six to nine months after that.
Kind of a follow-up question. And Michael, you kind of alluded to it back of the envelope. You know, with 5.3 acres, our downtown, kind of what we want, you've seen what DPZ, what's the market bear? Is this a very marketable thing, or is this going to be something we're going to have to, you guys are going to have to really work at? Find somebody. You know, Northeast Cape is different. You've open land, do what you want out there. Right now, we're looking for this little niche, this diamond in the rough in downtown Benita. How easy is that going to be to market, or how hard is it going to be to market?
He's going to take a stab at it, but I have an answer. I will tell you, we would not take a, we would not take a project like this on unless we thought we could be successful with it. And so, I mean, we're, you know, we're investing a lot of time and energy, and I know the monthly stipend sounds like a lot of money, but for the amount of time and effort that we would put into it, it's just really odd to keep the lights on for us. So, we, we're very confident, is what I would say. Jeff?
So, my answer is, and I alluded to it in my presentation.
Yeah, I was going to say if your knee is okay.
You got to step up to the rung mark all the time. The knee's fine, by the way. I picked the right surgeon. We're not selling a piece of dirt. What we're selling is a vision, and the vision, as it was contemplated by the renderings that you saw, included some multifamily, it included some retail, included some parking. During the process, we're going to determine whether the parking's going to be paid for or is it going to be free? We're going to determine the market rates. I can tell you what those are now for multifamily. You've got a lot of multifamily under development right here in Benita now. How long is it going to take to absorb that? So, it's an equation. It's easier to answer your question by telling you what we're not going to do. We're not going to hang a sign on it and have the tax card, which has the current value of 1.4 million, and say best offers received by next week. That's not what we're selling. What we're selling is a 5.3-acre development parcel and a vision that's going to be the gateway to Benita Springs. So, it's, it's a much different process, and it's, we're not trying to be evasive, but when we get to the point where you're evaluating the proposals, the land will, you'll see the image of what it is worth. And it's going to be worth a lot more than if we just put a CBRE sign on it tomorrow and said best offers by next week.
Fred?
Yeah, two, two, two things. Number one, just a little comment. For those that are, know about HOAs and clubhouses, they spend more than $26 million on those things. And that's even sometimes it's a renovation of an existing clubhouse. So, I think the $26 million is probably on the low side. Secondly, I want to make sure we're going to build flexibility into the RFP to where this is a guideline, a concept, but we're, we're open to their ideas as well, right?
Absolutely. And our, the RFP language will say just that. They are conceptual, they're illustrative, as DPZ said, but developers, we want you to bring your best and most creative ideas that fit into the vision that council has put forward.
And I'm sure you've participated in projects where you had a very rigid, this is it versus what you're advocating here.
That's right. We want the best, most creative proposals that are in keeping with your vision.
And I'll just add, you all are to be commended. DPZ's done a great job in the drawings that we've seen and, and the thought that has gone into it and what you all are thinking about. You're six months ahead of the process that we find most of the city clients that we have in. They haven't gone through this exercise already, and you all have. So, you all are to be commended, and I do believe that DPZ's done a really nice job for you.
Thank you. So, thank you. And I really, there's been a lot of questions here answered, and I've certainly been one to want to bring this to the forefront and bring it, you know, like I said at the last meeting. I'm tired of clearing our throat. It's time to go. So, there's been a lot of questions answered here. I'm sure there'll be more as we go. We did have a discussion this morning. My, and it's not a concern. My only idea was, while we have a few other properties downtown, what if, when we're getting all this national attention, what if somebody asks about a parcel down the street? Well, what else does a city own if I could do just a little coffee shop, or maybe I could have a little something different? What else? I don't want to be in the position to say, well, we haven't decided what we're doing with that other parcel, or we haven't decided what we're doing over there. So, from a question that you did hear this morning, could we just kind of talk through that a little bit?
Sure. So, you know, Bamboo site's just one of the half a dozen parcels that you have downtown. And if you're interested in doing so, we would certainly be willing and open and recommend that you do put in some of the other parcels to give yourself and developers opportunity. And, you know, and it may be that we say you are encouraged to respond to one parcel or all the parcels, you know, in a comprehensive RFP approach that way. That way, you have the opportunity for somebody that wants to do that little coffee shop down the street, that they can just do one parcel if they want to, or they can, you know, you can get a developer to do the whole thing. And there is some benefits also that the fabric of the development, the design of the, the, the development is cohesive. You know, it's not a real mishmash, hodgepodge of design elements.
We are about to issue an RFP for the city of Jacksonville, and it's three parcels. And we have said in the RFP, you can bid on all three or any of them individually. And so, there's the option, if you only want to bid on one parcel, you can, and if you want to bid on all three for a much larger development, you can do that, too. So, we could certainly build in that flexibility.
Well, that's where my head's at, and that's obviously a discussion for council if we're comfortable with that. I just don't, I love what we're doing, don't miss him, but I don't see the advantage of doing piece by piece by piece if we have three or four, five, six, whatever the number is pieces available. I think while we're doing this, we can entertain those as well, would be, would be my thought.
I agree.
Okay, so, I'll make, I'll make that motion that we roll in other pieces, but I think we, obviously, we need to identify those.
Would we, the staff would like the opportunity to do is bring back a map, and we could do that the next meeting.
And, and we're going to, and I want to be very clear, right? And I thought I was clear before. Apparently, I wasn't. I wanted to have this discussion on all parcels. I don't want to do this piecemeal. So, I will wait another meeting, but I want to be very clear about it. Yes, Derek?
You're waiting for another meeting only because we are doing a piggybacking contract. We have to execute that contract because the contract would exceed our lien's authority to sign on our own. So, that, so that little brief period of time is just so we can formalize that.
Sure.
In that timeframe, because I know there is a motion and a second on the floor, is there, is everyone in consensus to just add all the downtown parcels to that so we can make sure that it comes back?
No, we just have to have a conversation about it and decide what parcels we're talking about.
So, then I want a table approving this for right now. I'll vote against it until we are ready, like I've been saying, to have the discussion.
Okay. Well, what we could do is we can come back at the next meeting.
Hang on a second. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Can we still have a discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay. So-
Could I make one comment?
Yes.
If you add more parcels, our fee doesn't change. The monthly fee doesn't change. If that makes any difference to you whatsoever, just so you know that.
Doesn't make sense. Clarifying.
Per parcel, it stays the same, or it stays 7,500?
7,500 for all of them.
Economy of scale.
Yeah, that's right.
Exactly. And we're grateful for the opportunity if you so choose.
Appreciate that. Fred, or Peter, then Fred?
Thank you so much. Me or Peter?
Doesn't matter. Peter and then Fred. Everybody's anxious, so-
I'm not anxious. I asked to talk, and now can I talk?
Absolutely, you can. And Fred, you're going to have to wait a minute. Peter is talking.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You got it.
I think we should go forward with this today. I think you make a good point about we should look at other parcels as well. And we can do that at the next meeting. I don't know what the five or six is, so that's why I'd like to hear about it. Very much interested in that. I know from memory, we've talked about the lemon parcel. The lemon, the lemon parcel, there's been previous conversation on council, a lot of it, about lemon tree and holding that. I think at one point, there was a, what was going on there?
Farmers' market.
Thank you, Fred. The farmers' market, et cetera. I don't know what the other parcels are. That's the only reason.
Right.
So, I think what you're suggesting makes a lot of sense, but I think we should move ahead, approve this, and absolutely decide thoughtfully at the next meeting. Because they have economies of scale, and I think what was said about, was it Jacksonville you just said, makes a lot of sense as well.
Right.
So, don't disagree. I just think we should do this first and then move on.
Thank you. Fred?
Well, I was going to offer a slightly different idea, and that would be, I would think that if we can get what Bamboo Village is supposed to look like, which will have that as soon as we narrow in on which one of these proposals we like the best, that that would be the time to market the rest of the block as a block. Because then, those individual people that couldn't afford to buy bamboo and all that other, that want these small parcels, would be able to see, okay, this is what the overall scheme is, and I'm trying to fit something on my lot that will work with this, and I can get customers from this Bamboo Village development and vice versa. And that's just a thought, but I think it's worth discussing anyway.
Right. No, and good. So, Peter, I will agree with you that this is important. I don't want it to be misconstrued as unimportant or send any wrong message. But I want to send a message that I want to be ready at the next meeting for a full discussion. So, with that, I will support this piecemeal, even though it goes against my original thought.
Thank you.
So, there's been a motion and a second?
And your fee, we can make a decision next meeting. Is it good? Okay.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Great. Thank you very much. Yes, Arlene?
We will have the contract for your approval under the state process for the next meeting. We'll also have a map of all city downtown properties, and then you could give us direction on which ones you want included.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Okay, we're going to move on now to mayor and council member items. Item A is a discussion of a water town hall meeting. I've brought this up before. We have settled on a date, and Laura has been so kind as to put together a flyer. We'll be circulating this. It's going to be October 16th, which is a Wednesday evening. It's going to be here at City Hall at 6:30. It's going to be with South Florida Water Management Board Chairman Chauncey Goss. It's going to be with Dr. Mike Parsons from Florida Gulf Coast University, who Governor DeSantis has appointed recently on the water board. And it's going to be Mayor Kevin Rowain from Sanibel, who, as you heard, is very well-versed. I'll be moderating, and I would certainly want all of council here to, I get, well, Derek, you let me know how we want to handle that. Yeah, and we'll just notice it. And really want to get a good turnout and keep the heat on and keep the dog after the bone, Laura. How's that on the issue?
Motion to approve. Second?
Okay, yes, Arlene?
We're going to notice as a workshop so that you all can be in attendance.
Right. Thank you very much. Okay, motion to approve and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Okay, and my next item is-
Thanks for doing the-
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Pete. And the next item here, and he won't pick it up real well, but this is depending on, if you're the mayor of Benita Springs, or depending if you're the mayor of Astero. We're going to call it Jaws versus Claws. Astero's going to call it Claws versus Jaws. And it's going to be the first annual Benita Springs Bull Sharks versus Astero Wildcats varsity football game ever. It's going to be Friday, October 4th, at 2019, at 7:00 PM kickoff. We're asking members of council to please be there at 6:30 if you'd like to participate. We're going to get T-shirts. We're all going to walk out, the city councils from Benita Springs, the city councils from Astero. We're going to go out for the coin flip. But because the game's in Astero this year, we are going to have the mayor of Astero actually flip the coin. Can't be 13 or 14 of us, or whatever the number is, flipping the coin, although it would be fun. My understanding is that, obviously, next year, the game will be in Benita Springs. And they generally do these in two-year scheduling timeframes is what I'm getting at. In theory, two years from now, and moving forward, this is always going to be the last game of the year. So, it's not initially, it's going to be, like I said, October 4th. So, we're really looking for a great turnout. There's going to be, in fact, Arlene, I haven't seen them yet, but we're going to get some renderings of a trophy, not just kind of a, where everybody gets a participation trophy. It's going to be a great, big, enormous trophy with the score of the game, the MVP of the game, the, I'm not sure exactly what all is going to be etched on there, but basically the score of the game and the MVP moving forward. And it's going to be, we're going to make a big deal of this, so.
Motion to approve. Second?
Thank you. And Arlene?
Initially, Benita Springs High School would like you all to be wearing their colors, so they'd like to furnish you all with a shirt. And Debbie will be getting each year shirt sizes. That's from your hometown high school.
And, yes, in order the larger size, because who knows how the T-shirts run? Yes, Greg?
I just want to mention, this is Astero's homecoming also.
Yes.
Oh.
Oh. What are you thinking of?
I don't know.
Something with the-
Astero has been doing very well right now, so.
Yeah.
Benita High School has too. Maybe a little spring?
Yeah, I don't know. There's something going on.
But I certainly want to thank Mayor Bill Ribble from Astero and their city council. I know they're excited. Principal Jeff Estes from Benita Springs that I've been talking to. And school board woman Chris Patrica, who's been helping us with this as well. So, it's a fun thing. It's a way to show pride. It's the first-ever varsity football game. So, we're looking forward to that. And please get there when you are able. And participants of Benita Springs, it'll be a lot of fun, so. So, thank you very much. And now, we are at, I've got that, I've got that, item nine, which is a public hearing to commence the transmittal process to amend the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan related to the remaining EAR state-mandated changes. And I'll let somebody else read that if they need to.
I'll read it. We're not actually adopting an ordinance today, but we'll consider this the first reading for purposes of the adoption.
Let me just ask a question.
Sure.
Do you have to read the whole thing, or can you just read the-
An ordinance is, it's state law that you read the titles.
Okay.
As you recall, the budget process, it had been the past practice of the city to read the entire budget. I spent two hours, didn't bill the city for it, finding ways to get out of that. There's no requirement that we do that, not even in the city's own arcane structure. So, tomorrow, the meetings will go a little faster. "In order to the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the city of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan as adopted by ordinance number 0216 as amended considering remaining state mandated amendments on the evaluation and appraisal report, so as to amend the future land use element, coastal conservation management element, and the capital improvements element to revise and update the remaining existing goals, objectives, and policies and data analysis in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing for conflicts clause and severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes." And now, Mr. Chris?
Mayor, council. As you are aware, this is the next step along our EAR process. We started this with the evaluation appraisal report. We are now working to transmit our state mandated amendments associated with that. Dr. Margaret Banyan is here to present those to you and also to walk you through a couple of decisions you need to make and impacts of those decisions. I'll bring Dr. Banyan up.
Thank you. Good morning. So, I also want to introduce Rosemary Fusco with Insight, who's also on the project team. Rosemary. So, the presentation here this morning is just a couple reminders, but some important maps that we need to share. And we want to take a little time with this so that you understand the implications of what these changes are. So, first, in terms of the amendment history, as John said, the EAR was completed in 2016. And in 2017, we completed the first phase of the state-required amendments. At that time, we had some additional amendments that needed to be made that were, the plan was to phase them in. And so, that's the stage we're at now, is the sort of the second phase of those state-required amendments. Because they were fairly significant in terms of the coastal high hazard map. So, we need to take a little time to understand the implications of that. So, the idea is then to move quickly into the remaining of the optional amendments. So, as you know, we can't bring forward more optional amendments until we're done with those that are required by the state. So, part of the plan and something that we would like you to think about, that you've already talked about this morning, is we can, our plan is, if you agree with these amendments today, send them to the state and then move to adopting these amendments November 20th. At the very next agenda item, I don't know that we have to wait for the next meeting. That would be something that you could talk about following that. You could vote on your optional amendments, and we can talk about how to phase those in. So, at your last, the last time we spoke with you, you wanted us to move forward with the transportation element and the state-required changes. Because we needed to do state first, we are not bringing forward transportation. Those are optional. So, what we can talk about today as we get through this discussion is what you want our focus to be on next. And so, I've heard some discussion about that being downtown. There's some options about whether you want that to be solely downtown, how that impacts season. But we can kind of save that for the end of the presentation. So, those optional amendments, we've sort of said they could be fall '19 to spring 2020. That's kind of how we're phrasing all of those remaining optional amendments. So, as you remember, we had the state required, and those were coastal high hazard map concurrency and transportation concurrency specifically. And then there was a few other acreage amendments that needed to be made. Then we have under optional, things that are annexation-related. Those are in the future land use categories, future land use map. And then we also had the other optional, which was the transportation element, the housing element, and anything else with the future land use element, including the map series, because you do have some out-of-date maps. We are assuming that downtown will be part of the amendments in that optional phase. So, the focus for today is the state required. And again, that's concurrency, specifically transportation concurrency, and then the coastal management and the coastal high hazard requirements. Concurrent is not all that exciting. We made a couple changes so that you're consistent with state law to be, to just double-check and be real clear. But that's not the big news. The more significant amendments is related to your coastal high hazard areas. So, this depicts your existing coastal high hazard area map. That appears in your future land use element, and that's figure seven currently. So, with that map, this is kind of a blanket administrative area that you created previously in statute. There was rule 9J5 that required you to move populations away from the coastal areas. So, that rule has now gone away. But what the state did, oh, I'll get to that next. Just sticking with the current map, the majority of your coastal high hazard area policies appear in your conservation and coastal management element. So, while you have the map and the future land use element, you have the policies in the coastal management element. So, they're separated. Okay, so however, so that's your existing map. So, however, what the state did is they defined what your coastal high hazard area is. And that's not subject to negotiation. So, that coastal high hazard area is the area below the elevation of the category one storm surge as established by the slash computerized storm surge model. So, the state defined what your coastal high hazard area is, and it is not what you've called your map, your previous existing map. Okay? So, this depicts the category one storm surge line. And again, this is in your materials if you want to review. This is from the Department of Emergency Management data. The storm surge, category one storm surge line is a line. And so, we've depicted that in GIS. Okay? If you notice, when you compare both maps, these are very different maps. Okay? So, it leaves you with the option about what to do. What our amendments do with this area is to say, you're required to have a coastal high hazard area map. And that's the map that's in yellow, orange. So, we've renamed the coastal management area map. And that would be option one. So, option one generally reflects your existing coastal height, your old, I'm going to call it your old coastal high hazard area. So, that generally reflects that existing area with the addition of the newly annexed areas in 2014. So, the difference between your existing figure seven and this is just adds in the annexed area. The purpose for adding that in is that it was always in a coastal high hazard area as far back as we can see. 2009, I think, was the last update. Your option two, and we can talk about the implications here. Your option two would extend your coastal management area to overlap with the coastal high hazard area. So, all of the areas in green are the overlap. Because when you add green and blue together, or blue and yellow together creates green. So, what we've done on this map is said, those are the areas of overlap. So, the policies that we're talking about and the implications are generally here. So, the areas that this would now apply to if you did choose option two, you would have policy, your existing policy five. Your restrictions would be limiting on density in barrier islands, shoreline development. Undeveloped properties would be considered for reduced or minimum density. Infill only, could not exceed the surrounding density intensity of surrounding areas. Your public land acquisition could be targeted to the CMA. We're calling this the CMA. You'd have to be consistent with flood damage protection ordinance. No new mobile home parks and site development techniques would also apply to reduce losses due to flooding.
Margaret, this is the existing policy five?
This is, yes. So, this would now apply. So, the choice is really what's your coastal management area boundaries?
Right, but this is not a new policy. This is the existing policy.
These are existing policies, correct. They are not new policies. It would just apply to generally the areas circled in red. They are not new policies, it would just apply to generally the areas circled in red.
So how far east is the green?
The green goes to your city boundary. The eastern part of the boundary. On your map, there's a few canals that extend past I-70, east of I-75. So if you look at, I don't know how to go backward on this. It's a challenge. Okay, all right.
Welcome to the club.
Yes. So if you look at this coastal high hazard, this map, the, no matter what you do, this is your state coastal high hazard map. And if you look east of 75, my pointer, oh, okay, very nice. I've learned something new today. Very valuable information. So if you look east of I-75, there's a few canals that appear in the coastal high hazard map. So really, there's, there's not a lot of discretion that you have with this coastal high hazard map, it is what it is. The question, I think, is what you want your coastal management area to apply to. And those are generally these policies in your Gulf Five.
What's the red circle, is that new?
I just wanted to highlight the difference between the maps.
Oh.
That really, so the difference between option one and option two is pretty much that area circled in red.
Or is that's the new state mandated part that is in addition to what we previously had, or no?
So let me answer that in a way that I think.
Okay, go ahead, you say it. Say what it is.
So, so let's go back to option one.
Right.
Option one is your existing coastal management area. Option two would include your coastal high hazard area.
State mandated.
Yes. Your discretionary, what you did in this coastal management area previously was you had these policies related to limiting development. So the, so we need some direction about what you want your coastal management area to reflect.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
We take a week or two and talk to staff about this unless we have to do this today? Because I think I understand it, but I think, I think the choice is, I mean, in my view, preserving what we had, plus you have to add on a tiny little bit because the state's requiring it, or you're going to cut the whole thing back in an area that's had flooding and the storm surge, the storm surge that the state law is very low. I mean, that's just category one. So, but I think we, personally speaking, I need time to think about it and talk to staff about it.
So.
Is that all right? You got a time deadline here that you're?
Well, you're, we're going to have to re-advertise that, the transmittal hearing.
I see.
We've got to have two hearings on this, or two?
Well, there's, it goes to your local LPA, which is already done. Then you have your transmittal hearing that goes to state, comes back, and then there'll be an adoption hearing at that point.
So can I weigh in on your timeline very quick?
Yeah, yeah.
This, if you just go in this direction today, you're not able to do adoption until November 20th. So, because this is a coordinated review process. So you need 60 days at the state level. And then the other piece is that this is going to impact when you can move forward with your optional amendments. So John and I think discussed that you still have an opportunity to make some changes when you do adoption, but I think, do you want to weigh in on that, how that might work?
Sounds like it's all very complicated.
Well, it, it can be, if you let it, but the bottom line is, I actually understand exactly what you're trying to do, and I think that it can be accommodated if you were to transmit something today.
Right.
And when it comes back to you, we've had plenty of time to sit down and go through a discussion, and at that time, you still wanted more time, we could just continue the, the hearing date from then.
Or if we want to change it at the time, we can.
Correct. When you adopt it, you would have the opportunity to adopt either, in either direction.
I'd make a motion that we keep what we had and obviously include what the state's requiring us to do.
And.
With that understanding, we can go back and think about it and pare it back if necessary.
Correct. And after this is transmitted, be happy to spend whatever time you'd like to, to talk about it and figure out which, which option's best.
Fred.
Does any of this change building heights and things like that in, that's already in the pipeline, that we've already looked at? Are we getting, are we going lower or anything with any of this stuff?
No, you're thinking of a flood zone designation, and the only impact of that would be when we're looking at the new flood maps. This is, is a different animal entirely. This deals a lot more with, with density and with evacuation times.
Okay, so would any of that density affect Old 41 more than it already is?
It could. Yes.
So that is also a part of the discussion that we've had with staff, is that there is some impact on your downtown. And our suggestion would be under the optional amendment phase, which hopefully is consistent or right after the state required, is that we work on that and make sure that the impacts are, are not too significant on your downtown.
Well, I, I would, I could support passing this, but I do not support lowering the densities. I mean, my God, we're going to go out with an RFP, ask them for proposals based on, and now we're going to do this?
I don't know if she's.
I think that's, I think we, can we exempt it out for right now? Move the line or something? Because I just think that's.
That's a good point.
Well, just looking at the two maps.
Right.
I mean, the ones the state mandated, the ones in the orange, I don't think we can, and that's where it captures the, that's where, that one there particularly, the state mandated ones captures, let's call it out, the bamboo.
Oh, it does?
Yes. Because prior to that, the one that we currently have on the maps stops at Old 41 and goes west. Nothing to the east, which is the bamboo.
Right.
My point being is, is, and I'll ask Margaret this question, can we, I guess, circumvent or go, do something different than the state mandated? Or is that a case by case and it's our decision on a case by case through a zoning change or whatever?
So no matter what you do with the coastal high hazard area map, the orange map, okay? No matter what you do, those areas are subject to policies in Gulf Four that relate to hurricane evacuation. So in this area that you see, that's hurricane evacuation policies.
Okay. Nothing with density or intensity or hot.
Right, yes.
Okay.
So that's one issue. I think the, when you go, oh, I keep going backwards, so let me, let me fix that. Okay. Again, if you wanted to move forward with option two, so what you would be saying there is that in these new areas, they have to meet hurricane evacuation, but also these would be now required. So intensity and density would apply to those areas that I've circled. Yes, it includes bamboo. And one of the things that is also discretionary during your optional phase is that you could go through and exempt all of downtown from these policies.
That's up to us. Through the H, through the CHA.
Through the CMA.
CMA, I'm sorry.
Yes. And so the, the reason to think about it that way is because what we're working on now is only your state required amendments. We can't really work on many optional amendments at this point. What we're just trying to do is, is fix the, what the state's requiring you to do. So that's why we would say work on exempting downtown, all of downtown, under the optional phase, which is coming right next. All right, so.
Is.
That, that's the purpose for some of the timing here.
How quick would we be able to do that?
Our, our suggestion is that when you do the adoption for the state required on November 20th, that your next item be the downtown and these amendments.
Is there any way we can kind of do those, kind of on a concurrent track so we don't lose another 60, 90 days?
We'd be at the same meeting. What she's discussing is you would adopt the state, you would have the final hearing on the adoption of the state mandated changes on November 20th.
I guess what I'm asking is.
And then the very second item on the same day would be to prove that.
We could, could we do that, have a parallel so that we do the one thing and also do the other one?
It would be the adoption the same day, but then that would, then that gets forwarded to the state.
You would, you would be not 60 days delayed, you'd be 30 days.
Can I cut to the chase on something? Is, does anybody think that anything DPZ is presenting is out of bounds with the, this policy?
She, yeah, she said they would be lower.
No, I'm asking about what DPZ's presenting.
Does the.
I guess the only question to, okay, I'm sorry.
What I'm just, does the density change under your, the plan?
Jacqueline Gensen for the record. So with the expansion of this area, there are some properties, because remember when I spoke about this in August, with the current overlay map, there are some districts that don't have density. So with this plan, we are adding some density back in to some of those areas. So these policies, as adopted, could have an impact on how we introduce that density back.
But there's a way through it, for all.
Correct.
Okay.
Most definitely.
Mike?
So option two is expanding the new CMA into what the state requires, but what if we just kept the CMA where it is? Because the state requirement is only for evacuation and, and not policy five.
That's one of your options.
That's a good idea.
Okay. But, but also, could we reduce the CMA to get rid of the areas that sign, because this, I'm assuming this is a LiDAR based map, is why it's going to the orange?
I don't want, it's probably your, your slosh models based on elevation.
You cannot reduce.
Well, I, I'm not saying reduce the orange, I'm saying reduce the C, because our, our CMA, you said, was an administrative blanket, they just said, this area is going to be under these rules.
You can be consistent. You, option one, which is your existing CMA, yes, you have discretion, you can continue with option one.
But could, could we shrink that to match more of the orange, to, to exempt some areas that right now are under the.
I think you're suggesting an option two instead of, does it have to be expanded to the full extent that's laid out in the, in the map?
But well, I'm saying, I'm saying leave, let's not expand the CMA into the new area that's heading east. But in addition to that, can, can we exempt out some of the areas that the new map's saying aren't, shouldn't be part of the coastal high hazard?
Or.
So the, the direction that we've gotten historically from council about this is to maintain the existing protections, which is what your public has said to do over and over and over again. So that, you, you do have the option of reflecting your CMA to just be consistent with the coastal high hazard. You do have that option, that's not what we've heard from council in the past as a preference.
Okay.
So that's why.
But in a minute, we could choose option one. CMA stays exactly how it's always been. And then the orange that heads east only affects evacuation and none of policy five.
That would be correct.
So option one's probably the way to go, and, and I would make a motion to choose option one.
Second, with that condition, in other words, what, all you're doing is saying.
Yeah.
State mandate only applies with respect to evacuation, not with respect to policy five.
Correct.
Okay. And keep what we, and plus, keep what we have. Okay.
Okay, there's been a motion and there's been a second, is there further discussion?
Well, one other thing. You did something up north to include the properties that were, Derek, annexed into the city, that's included in this?
Yeah, it's a little jot right there.
So the little, we call it the little finger, that's one of the coastal areas.
Right.
Again, that's always been in a coastal high hazard area.
So that's in the motion, that's in this, okay.
Okay, there's been a, no, absolutely, there's been a motion and a second. Derek?
Yeah, public comment, you also had a little bit of public comment at the very beginning of the meeting today. I would add, ask that because those comments should be transmitted along to the state planning agency, that, that Ms. Pasadomo's comments be added to the record now, and if she wants to make some additional comments, she'll.
Yes, please.
We're not done, though.
No.
We still have more to do. Whenever you are ready.
I keep, I think you keep moving forward to the, to a complete.
Okay, very good. So that's, that's, helps us with knowing the language that you want to move forward with. You still have some other state required amendments to look at, and so we're happy to go through page by page, I don't think it would take long.
Okay.
If that's, if that's your preference.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's start with the future land use element, and I believe that you do, if you have a colored copy, you'll be able to see the highlighted areas. But we also, for discussion purposes, added some page numbers to make things easier. So we'll be on the future land use element, first page, number page, or page five. Okay, and then we're just going to keep on going. So this change is, previously, we added acreages.
I'm sorry, Margaret, are we supposed to be looking down here for the?
Yes, yes, we added those page numbers. No, we're looking at the future land use element.
All right, it's another page five, I guess.
You may be out of order, so.
I'm just.
Yeah, future land use element.
That's unusual. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
So that new policy, when we did the state required amendments, we added acreage in every category. This policy helps you to not have to update acreage every time you have a small scale amendment. Okay, we're good? All right. Page seven just changes your old coastal high hazard area to your new coastal management area. In these future land use categories, this describes where the property is. So that was the required change, so that's page seven, page eight.
Hey, real quick, Margaret, back on that? Because what it talks about in here, is that kind of what Councilman Forbes is talking about, where we change it to the CMA and it goes into the Old 41 areas where it says maximum density of 10 units per gross acre.
That was your existing policy, so you're not changing your existing policies?
You're not expanding the CMA to the new boundary of the orange map. You said you keep the orange map as is intact and just the policy evacuation. So if the orange covers the other side of bamboo, it's only going to affect on evacuation, it's not going to.
Right, but if we put the CMA over on the north side, or on the east side, it will affect it.
But you chose.
I know, but I'm, that's today. Come the 20th, we can change our mind again, if, that's all I'm making a comment.
Okay, yes. So in the future land use categories, where it used to say CHHA, that was referring to your old outdated CHHA map. Those are now referring to the new CMA map for option one. All right, so there's no change other than which map are you referring to? From a policy standpoint. Okay, can I keep going? Okay. Then the next change would be on page 22 of your future land use element. And that change is because it's about concurrency. We were a little concerned that that policy would imply that concurrency was required for transportation, parks and schools as well, which it's not. So we changed it to just say that you're going to meet concurrency standards in the capital improvements element. Yes.
Are we doing this by reference so that if the state, in three or four years, changes that coastal high hazard and the other thing to, goes in more or goes less, that if we reference it, then we're using the most recent thing they got? Otherwise, we get stuck like we did before, where we have something that got obsoleted 10 years ago and we, and it's still the, kind of the unofficial law of the land in Benita? Is there any, is, which way are we doing this?
You can't, you can't adopt comprehensive plan policies by reference. So if, if changes change at the state level that require adjustments to the coastal high hazard maps, we would have to adopt those changes.
We, we don't have to wait for an ear amendment process before that, you could do it as an optional change when it, when it comes forward.
All right.
We could have done that before and we never kept, we never, we kept the old map in there. So I just don't want to see us. So I just don't want to see us fall into that same thing, because the state does change sometimes as, as a new group of people come in or whatever, so.
Yeah, but also, I think with us changing it from the CHHA and changing it to the CMA, that kind of ties our hands, we have to go by that one too. So if we don't change the, the, the blue map at any given time, that's what we've got to live by. Along with the coastal high hazard, which is state mandated. Okay.
Okay, next change on page 26. There's just some clarifying language about what the acreage requirements are in the DRGR area. And it's just a reminder, more of an administrative sentence about what, what's included in that acreage. Page 27, page 28 replaces the CHHA area with the CMA area. So there's no policy changes there. Page 32, same thing, refers to the, now the coastal management area and then updates the title of the, the RPC dat, map and data that you'd be working with. There's not another change until we get to page 50. And page 50 removes your old CHHA map. And what we would do is, in option one, replace that with figure seven, which is the blue map. Page 52, you voted not to go with option two, so we would not include that map. And then finally, in the future land use element, page 56, you have the coastal high hazard area, which is the state-required map. Okay? Any questions about future land use element?
Yeah, Margaret, pardon me for being dense, but we're, option one is what exists, plus the state mandated, plus the stub up north, with Mike's caveat that the extension of the state required only relates to the state requirement for evacuation, not for Policy Five.
So-
That's, that's, we've, that's what we voted on, I don't know if that's option one or two, or whatever it is.
That is option one.
All right, thank you.
Which is this blue map.
Gotcha.
And the previous, oops, let's go back. The blue map and that map.
Right, okay, all right.
As separate maps, not a combined map, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's in, reflected in this language as well, for your options. Okay, all right. So, the next element, conservation coastal management element, just to quickly review those, those changes. So you'll see on page three, page three under goal five is, the first section is the required policies with the yellow map, the coastal high hazard area. And those refer to hurricane evacuation. Page four establishes the, the CMA area as the one that the optional policies apply to. Page four is your blue map. Those are the policies that would now apply to your blue map. Okay? Page five, goal six, those changes are related to limitation of public expenditures, again, relating to the blue map. Can I keep going? Okay. Page 25, it's just a, on policy 12.1.2, we just updated, that was Florida Department of Community Affairs, so we updated that because there is no longer Department of Community Affairs. Page seven replaces the CHHA reference to CMA and corrects a typo. And those are the changes for the coastal management element. Okay, last one, capital improvements element, this is the concurrency language. So capital improvements element, page one. You are no longer required to annually evaluate and update your capital improvements element. You're only required to review. So we changed that to review. Page two, we simply added, just for extra protection, to say that your capital improvements plan will be consistent with, with that mandated in Florida statutes. Page five, you are no longer required to have a financially feasible capital improvements element. It only requires that you have a capital improvements element. So that's the change there. The change is on page six, the state no longer refers to proportionate fair share, they just refer to proportionate share. So the changes were made there. And page six, what we did for concurrency, so you remember parks, schools and transportation are no longer, you can't deny a permit based on a failing level service. So what we did is we separated out the language for parks and schools to make it very clear about what that applies to. And then we added new language that said that transportation facilities are going to meet state statute. So rather than reiterating state statute in the, in the policies, we're adopting more or less by reference to that section. So these-
We can do reference here, but we can't do reference to maps?
That's a question for, for Derek, you can adopt by reference.
You're, you're talking about adopting state, things that are in-
In the statute.
But they're not, this is not about a map, there's no, we can't adopt a map or anything that would require separate data analysis.
But the state law could change from time to time and-
It could change.
And a map as a state map, so.
Yes, but it's not specific to Benita Springs.
Okay.
Okay. So the strikeout language was just strikeout language on page six and seven that we moved. And then again, we took out financially feasible, page eight, uh, page seven, page eight. You actually have two policies that apply under sufficient capacity, so we added in the second policy. Page nine, we just updated some typos. Page nine, we took out the gender reference to the city manager. Same thing on page 11. Page 12 and page 13, we removed, and I don't know if you can see it very well, track changes does not do well with tables. So we removed your old capital improvements projects and retained, so that's on page 12 and 13, those would be removed, and retained your current capital improvement plan. And then the last change is on page 17 and 18. We updated your water supply capital improvement projects, took out the old one, added the new. And then on page 18, we just added some clarifying language that, that you may rev, annual review and possibly amend your capital improvements element. And then took out some gender reference. So that's the summary of changes, and I, we would be looking to see if you agree with those.
Great, and now, and Margaret, are you good for now? We're going to go, go on to public comment, or?
I think the last thing would be the timing, just to get a confirmation about what you would prefer in terms of timing. So on November 20th, what we bring back, would you like it to be transportation and some of the downtown? Would you like it to just be focused on future land use in downtown? What are you thinking about?
I need a little clarification on downtown, because I thought with Mike's amendment, we're not, right, the state-
What she's, what she's referring to is optional elements. So as, as we stated before, we've moved forward with the form-based code.
Right.
There's an adopted map in the comprehensive plan regarding development, which has to be amended if we want to utilize the form-based code.
Right.
So that's an optional element, and we've talked about that, that, the council's desire was to have that fast track.
Well, it seems to me, it's the horse and the cart, the horse is DPZ and agreeing with what they're doing. And then put that into the comp plan once that's agreed to, right?
Correct.
Not have two bulls simultaneously going.
Correct, I think what Margaret's asking is, is do you want to just focus on the downtown with coordinating with DPZ on, in November? Or did you want to include transportation? Because that's also optional.
Well, I think they ought to coordinate with DPZ, right?
Yeah.
Yeah? Now, what's the transportation part, I thought, all right.
So the last time that we talked, you wanted us to do the state-required and the transportation element together. Because of the state-required, we're not able to do that. So would you be looking to have the transportation element brought before you in November?
What's your suggestion, Arlene?
I think what we might be able to do is if, we can talk with Dr. Banyan, and I think we could keep them together, but I, what I'd like to do is give the council opportunity one-on-one to meet with planning staff and Margaret Banyan, so that everyone's on the same page. So if there's any concerns when we come back in November, if it has to be separated, we could do that. But I think we could move forward on that path, because there was some good initiatives in there that will further help with grant opportunities. It furthers our complete streets, so there might be some opportunity that we want to keep that process moving forward.
Sounds right to me.
Yeah. Sounds old, okay.
Excellent, so that's all for me, thank you.
Thank you, Margaret, thank you very much, good to see you again. And now we're going to open it up to public comment on this particular discussion. Welcome, welcome back, I should say, how are you?
Thank you, I wanted to preserve my rights, so I spoke initially, and thank you for opening it up for me again. Again, Francesca Pasodomo for the record. I'd like to open with, I, I do sincerely appreciate the concern that I, that I saw in the discussion on the coastal element and the impacts that it will have on your property and the development rights on your property. I hope that you give the same concern to my client's property and the development impacts that expanding the CMA may have. For clarification purposes, I hope that during your review period, you clarify and confirm for for all developers and for members of your public, the following, that the CHHA and its expansion, I understand that it's based on slosh modeling and that's statutory, but that that will have no impact on development rights. That it's solely related to evacuation-related items and mitigation just related to evacuations. First clarification item. Second would be that expansion of the CMA is, is limited to the option one or even further limited, if, if you so desire, as was raised by Councilmember Gibson. The third thing I'd like to clarify or, or just object to is procedurally, my client was never put on notice of the potential impacts of this until a staff, this is at least my understanding of the procedure, until a staff report was generated in connection with their application to develop a multifamily project. The multifamily project, if you aren't familiar with it, is commercial on the, on the first floor, residential on the other floors. It's, it's, you know, that urban, new urbanism concept, it's in line with everything that you all are looking to do. So downgrading or, or the impact of Policy Five on this would be significant to even your own policies and objectives. And that, the other objection point is, is that the application was submitted. We've relied on the policies that are existing as of this date. If our application is not grandfathered, the, the economic signif, impact would be significant, and I can't stress that enough. So I hope I've been heard, and I hope my client has been heard. And again, that we obtain the same appreciation that you have for your own property in connection with your optional, optional amendment process. So thank you very much, if you have any questions, I'll be here, but otherwise, that's, that's all I have to say.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, there's been a motion, and we've got the language, Derek, do you want to?
There's a, yeah, there's a, there's a motion on the floor to transmit but limiting the new, the CMA to the existing coastal haz, high hazard. And as I, as I understood, the, the modification was the, the expanded CMA area would only be included for evacuation considerations, not for policy.
Well, we're not expanding CMA, we're keeping CMA the way, the current map.
Okay.
And then we're just having the coastal high hazard map separate for evacuation purposes only.
Okay.
Except for whatever that thumb is up north.
Anext areas.
Well, yeah, correct, the, the-
Thank you.
Option, option one had the, the annexed area in it too, so.
As long as you guys are clear and they're clear, I'm fine.
I think we've said it three times, so.
I think we have.
We're going to forget in five minutes.
Right.
We better go to the tape.
There's been a motion, and we'll rerun the tape to, we don't know exactly what it is, but I think we do know what it is, so thank you. Been a motion and a second, is there further discussion, council, staff?
Well, the only thing I amended, I think it was my motion, or maybe it was Mike's, consistent with what Arlene said about what they're doing on transportation. Right.
Yeah, well, that's separate.
Transportation and down, that's, yeah, separate.
Separate, okay.
That's just timing.
Separate, that's just timing, we'll be bringing that back.
Sorry, Mike.
Okay.
I'm good.
No, there's been a motion and a second, council, is there any further discussion? And public comment I just want to give in case anybody else from the public? Okay, seeing none, bless you, roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay.
Pete, can I just say, I know we all feel this way, a big thank you to Dr. Banyan and the work she's done and the advice she's given, really appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Okay, Derek, we're going to move on to item 10, the second reading and public hearing in the following ordinances, and also, public comment is allowed here as well.
Okay, this next ordinance is, one you've heard before, we continued from the last meeting. It's an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, providing for retail gas pumps, security measures establishing security measure requirements for owners and operators of retail gas pumps, providing for separability, conflicts, codification, tripers errors, and providing for an effective date. I have, at the request of council and comments received by Councilman Gibson, there was a specific concern with respect to, this is the credit card skimmers. And the issue is, the main focus of the ordinance is, as drafted by the Sheriff's Council ourselves and Lee County was to have a locking mechanism, so in the past, people have been breaking into those, setting machines in there, stealing your credit card information. There was concern raised by Councilman Gibson, what about the security on the outside of the machine? And chip readers in particular, and how they, there's an alternative for chip reading devices. I talked at length with the, the team at the sheriff's office on this issue. Unfortunately, this is a situation where the people that are breaking the law are just constantly moving a little bit faster, and there, there are systems that would allow a chip reader to be on the outside. There's nothing effectively they can do to, to limit that. They do feel confident that the language we have is, is broad enough to cover a lot of eventualities, but as far as items, a second, basically a second chip reader being installed on the outside, there's nothing we can legislate to prevent that, that's a, it's something that they're just going to have to keep an eye out for.
Motion to approve.
Second. My, my main concern was that you had an, an alternative to the security measures of making sure the locks were secure. Because most of them are separate readers that either are on the outside, or they go inside and put it inside where you can't see it. But the alternative was the device or system that encrypts the payment card information in the scanning device, which would basically mean of, forget about putting locks on it, because as long as you do this and you don't have to protect against the most common-
Right, and that was, that was their position, that, that if it, once it's encrypted from, from, if it goes into, on the outside, you put it in, it encrypts from something that the device has already, that opening it up, there's no, there's no way to break that down. Or the, the methodology that would be required for someone to take that decrypted information, break it down afterwards, is, is not something they've seen. But what they have seen is people putting a second reader on the outside that basically scans it simultaneously, and that-
But some of them will actually put the reader on, they'll open it up, put the reader on the inside, so you don't see it. And still, it would buy, you know, having this-
And that's a chip reader too, that, that was not something that-
Well, it, it's a, the magnetic stripe scanner, they don't do the chip reader part yet. But, but I was just wondering if, if in that, where, on number two, where you have a device or system that encrypts, if you can just put TRSM in there, which is tamper-resistant security module? That's the industry standard for what they're talking about. And that just means that they can't take the, the device out. Because if, if it isn't tamper-resistant, they can remove the device and then reverse engineer the encryption and, and get around it. So as long as it's the TRSM- So, as long as it's the TRSM, if they try to take it out, it like kind of self-destructs and they can't get at the information, so.
I don't see there'd be any reason not to put that in there.
I amend my motion for that.
Yes.
I just want to say, I brought this up months ago and obviously everyone was for it. We followed the lead of the sterile. But I want to thank Mike for, I mean, he's had another plane on this. In fact, I'm wondering why.
Another planet.
I'm wondering why you're so expert on this, Mike. But thanks, big.
It's how his mind works. It's good.
Big, 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 big thanks to Mike Gibson.
Absolutely. No, thank you very much. So, there's been a motion and a second. Staff or council, anything else at this time before we go to public comment? Okay, members of the public that would like to speak on this, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we have a motion to accept and a second. Is there further discussion?
No.
And Derek, anything else?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay, and I'll give last call once again to public comment. Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, Derek, what's next? We have, now we have another, anything else for you, Derek? I see that we're covered there. Okay?
Two executive sessions a little bit later, but.
Yes.
You're done with me for now.
No, wonderful. Okay, we actually now have a public comment time as well for members of the public that would like to speak on anything. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. Derek, anything else? City attorney items?
No other items.
Okay. Arlene, city managers report.
Yes, I'd like Ellie to come forward. What, what we'd like to go over with you is we, we would like to bring forward the request for proposals for the Wonder Gardens Cafe. You did hear public comment earlier. You also received some additional information from the Wonder Gardens. What staff's recommendation is, is that should you choose to consider that proposal, that you do it in tandem with the application process of the RFP, thereby allowing the RFPs to come in and then you can accept to review that as well at the same time. And so, it's, they're all looked at at the same time. Ellie's going to give you a very brief overview of where we are with the renovations so that everything's ADA compliant and that we're meeting the building code requirements to operate a restaurant there.
Great. Thank you very much. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm going to be very brief. You've had a very full morning. So, you have the proposed, you have the draft of the RFP that we'd like to send out in the next two weeks. It's to solicit very well experienced, very financially capable companies that would operate a restaurant facility in that building. And as a quick reminder, and, and the city manager has, has alluded to, we recognize that there were some building deficiencies. We worked with a local architect. We have improvement plans that we will be soliciting in the next couple of weeks for a contractor to come in to do handicap restrooms, ramps, accessibility issues, also electric and plumbing. That will be part of that. We will look at combining tasks, if you will. We heard previously that council would like to have a tenant in the building, the improvements completed, both the city's improvements as well as tenant improvements, and the doors opened by season. So, we all know that that's January, February. So, we are over, trying to overlap tasks to accomplish that. We feel like we can do that. One of the items in the RFP is that whoever is selected as the number one proposer would have to adhere to that timeframe. And we asked for who their project manager is, that, what their timeframes, and we've asked for timelines for that as well. So, with that, I will answer any questions that you have.
Great. Thank you. Counsel, Peter.
First of all, Ellie, thank you for the great work. But I want to talk about something here. So, if I might. The Wonder Gardens is not a restaurant, right? Their proposal is not.
Correct, correct.
All right. So, you know, they sent us an email that had a lot of detail in it last week. Wes got up this morning. Obviously, there's a lot of success there, which is what we were all hoping for and praying for. And those volunteers have pulled it off along with Thomas. If we just go out with this RFP, we're going to ask a lot of people in the private sector to scramble and come in with proposals. And then, at that time, at the same time, look at this other proposal. I'd rather have us understand the Wonder Gardens proposal, not today, but before that. If we're going to go with the Wonder Gardens, I'd rather just do it rather than, in effect, waste the time of a lot of people in private business who are putting in restaurant proposals. So, that's just what's on my, in my head. I just wonder if we should take, so, I, I actually, I didn't dive into what they proposed, but I, but I was impressed by what Wes said today about the financial success and the need. I, I wonder if we should take a short hiatus and understand that and make a decision up or down. Because I, I don't, I, I just don't see taking other people's time with the RFP and then say, well, thank you, but we're not doing a restaurant. I'd rather do it early than that.
No, I, I tend to agree if I may.
Yeah, Greg.
You done?
Then, no, Greg and then.
I'm done. I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
No, I, I tend to agree. I mean, right now, obviously, we know the Wonder Gardens board is, is doing all they can do and, and going above and beyond. I think if they, if we let them, whatever we do with this, they're going to make it work. Right now, we go out and do all this renovation. We don't know, A, who gets in there, how long they're going to stay there. We've already had one or two tenants already come in and bail on us. I think they'll take it and take ownership of, take ownership of it and make it their own. So, I, I, instead of us doing all the renovations, do the needed renovations to make it ADA accessible. But we don't need to make it into a restaurant yet because if their plan is to do it as a, as a learning area, it may not need to be have all the drains. It may not need to have the walk-ins, whatever. We're going to waste a lot of time and money for something that may not be there.
Sure. Just to clarify, the renovations the city was doing was not specifically to a restaurant. It's the ADA requirements and minimum building code. So, so it could be a different use. I do know that the grease trap's already there. There's some other thing. And what we were do, what, what we were doing is, is if a restaurant had their, at their own expense, some additional changes they wanted to make, they could do that in tandem with the city so they wouldn't be held up on any time. But the improvements the city's planning is just ADA and minimum building code for any tenant.
I, I just think with the, with the Wonder Gardens board coming up, coming forward, I think we've already got a good partnership with them. Give them an opportunity to convince us of what they want. Let us look at it before we, as Pete said, waste anybody else's time and effort.
Isn't that part of our. Laura, then, Laura, then Mike. Sorry, guys.
I don't think it hurts to hear what else, what other people have in plan, in mind. Because I think the Wonder Garden is doing a great job, but we need to see it. And then, what if we say, oh, this is problematic and we've delayed other people's proposals? And, you know, I don't know. I mean, is that what is really called for there? I mean, you know, I go with my grandkids and I kind of like to sit down afterwards because they keep running, 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 running. And so, it would be nice if we could go in and get, you know, a glass of chocolate milk and, you know, a hamburger or something. But, you know, it's up to council. So, I would say, send it out. Looking forward to seeing the Wonder Gardens, but other options too.
I just don't want to give anybody false hope because if the council itself is leaning to stay with the Wonder Gardens because of what they've done there and the board and our confidence that we have in them, I just don't want to waste anybody's time or give them false hope.
No, thanks. Mike?
Well, and I, I agree with Laura. I, you know, I, I think that's the whole process of having the RFP is we can get everybody's ideas. So, you know, I welcome them to submit their proposal. And I just want to make sure that, you know, according to page two, it says, under no circumstances should any prospective tenant influence or gain support of any member of city council. So, I don't want them to be precluded because they've already sent us a letter and spoke today. I, I want them to be able to submit, just like everybody else. But I think we need to go forward with it because if, if we do decide to go with somebody else, then they need to be able to get in there before season, so.
Well, we're not, I'm sorry, Fred.
Well, I, I tend to agree with Mike and Laura. I think that we should get it out. And, and we, my understanding from staff is there are a number of really good restaurant operators that are highly interested in that site. And I'm not sure that that isn't a good use for it. If that's what it was, we didn't have, they didn't, the person who was in there didn't have a restaurant before. That was her first start. And of course, we had the construction. I think this is a, a new day, so I want to see the proposals. And I want, if Wonder Garden wants it, I want them to go through the same scrutiny exactly that the other people are going to put through. We want somebody that's going to be able to be there and pay the bill.
And I would just add that, you know, we, we tried this. We went through a process once and to, mixed results, I guess I should say. And I don't want there to be mixed results with this process. And, and in my view, fabulous partner, wonderful partnership, great job. However, I want to see the full process and see who's interested in the property so that we can fully vet the best use, fully vet.
We have, so far, we have had about seven or eight folks contact me, asking about the RFP, when it was coming out, that sort of thing. And one of those is a national firm.
Right. So, I would suggest, so I can count votes here. I would suggest, so it's going to go forward. I would suggest at a minimum, so, so, all right, so let's say we're going forward. I'm trying to figure how this is going to work. Are we going to say in here, clear disclosure? So, you're going to have a, a committee, right? We're not making this decision.
My recommendation for, I, I think I know where you're going, is, is that disclose in there that, I mean, obviously, the cafe is attached to the, so. But have an alternative that the current tenant, adjacent tenant, the Wonder Gardens, may also submit a bid. But they're not restricted to restaurants.
With respect to that, can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is your RFP. It hasn't been issued yet.
They have an upper hand.
No.
Because then.
Well, I'm looking as far as disclosure.
They're, they're, they're in an exceptional position. They're, they're different than anyone else because they're already the adjacent tenant, so.
Okay.
You know, they.
And how is the decision being made? I assume it's by a committee of staff like we've done before?
There will be a committee recommendation and then it'll come back to the council.
For a final blessing.
Right.
All right, so how.
And not knowing, and I was just going to say, Peter, not that seven of us up here, so don't mishear what I'm going to say or qualify to make such a decision.
Right.
Who's going to be on this committee making the decision? Because I'm not saying it's the seven of us, but I'm just curious. Have they looked at, have they done this type of thing before?
Sorry?
In the proposal, we have outlined criteria that it would be three professional staff members on the selection committee.
That makes sense.
And then, we would bring forth to you in ranked order, the first, second, and third recommendation.
All right. So, it's going to be interesting then in that context. I'm not saying it can't be done, which is going to be interesting because you're going to have, whatever the heck you've got, a bunch of restaurant proposals and you're going to have a non-restaurant proposal. And somehow, that group has to somehow decide something. It's going to be interesting.
And we're not limited to just restaurants in the RFP, right?
Yes, we are.
If somebody else wanted to.
This RFP is specifically to restaurants.
Specifically to restaurants, I mean.
That's the direct, the previous direction.
Why can't we open it up to any use? Why, why are we limiting to just restaurants?
That, well, that was a direction we received previously. I mean, it's a, it's a policy decision if you wanted to, to.
All right, yeah. Fred and then Greg.
Number one, I, I don't know what professional means because staff is staff, right?
Yes.
Professional usually means you're a licensed architect, licensed engineer, licensed CPA or something. But I think that this is a good thing to open it up a little bit. And I would also say we've just hired this great firm. Let them give their comments to us too. And I want an emphasis on what's going to work the best, the highest and best use and financially sound, 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 concrete.
And we have included a five-year pro forma for how the proposer will occupy the building and run the business. So, it will give you projected sales and marketing.
But that's only as good and as, as strong as the person that's doing it.
Absolutely. No, I agree.
We gotta, the financial strength has got to be a key thing as well as what the use is going to be. Does it fit in with the downtown and all that? Imagine that we can get these guys to look at it for not a big deal.
Derek, can I ask what your advice is?
Well, depending on where you guys go with this, you, you might have to pull this back and have it re, redrafted. Because right now, it's prepared for restaurants. So, the rating criteria and everything else is designed for a restaurant. I, I don't know that it would be appropriate, even if the Wonder Gardens submitted, that they should be ranked along the restaurant criteria. They would just have an alternative committee analysis as to whether or not they think it's, you know, the pluses and negatives of it. I think we kind of call them out separate, but if the council's talking about opening this up beyond a restaurant, then you're going to have to probably step back a second, develop new criteria for how those use, what uses you're talking about, how they're going to interplay with the Wonder Gardens downtown, your other goals. So, you know, I know your desires to move this forward.
What if the Wonder Gardens had like a little area that was a snack area? You know, like when you walk into a hospital, there's a little tiny cafe, it wouldn't, you know, but if they had that plus their learning center, would they not qualify?
That's, that's certainly up to them. And I don't want to recommend, make recommendations to them. If they submitted a restaurant proposal, then we would rate them with, along the same criteria. But if, from what they're proposing now is the environmental learning center, that would, I would recommend that you allow that to be an alternative bid and everyone else can be aware of it. But that's not something else anyone else is going to do. So, they just get a separate recommendation.
Okay, Greg, did you have something?
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments, questions, kind of in reference to Fred's idea. I just think that we've been kicking this can down the road, sort of like selling downtown or doing what we're going to do down. We've been kicking this down the road. I don't think we should push it back. The other thing is I think the RFP is the RFP and it's based on a restaurant because that's what the last use was. If you're going to change a use, you're going to have to go in front of community development, change the use, maybe have zoning problems, zoning issues. If you're going to change it from retail to some, some other type of restaurant retail, there's going to be issues. So, I think that's why it should stand on its own. I do agree with Derek's comment about, you know, let that committee look at it. And, you know, they're going to look at it and say, okay, here's the best use of it as a restaurant. But here's what the Wonder Gardens wants, wants to do for it. It fits in what they're doing on that block with what the Wonder Gardens' vision is. Maybe this is a better use. Again, and I, and I haven't talked to the Wonder Gardens and, and I don't know if, if, you know, rent's going to be an issue. Are they going to pay the same rent? Is it, is it a lease? What kind of thing are they talking about? Are they looking at it as pro bono? I don't, I don't know. And that, that, I think that's going to play into what the committee looks at. Hey, here's a restaurant or a national restaurant that wants to come in or a coffee shop or whoever it is, willing to pay top dollars for it. But here's the Wonder Gardens, they want it as a learning center and they want it for free or for a reduced rate for the first. I'm not saying you do. I'm not, I'm not saying that.
No, 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 Greg, thanks, buddy. I appreciate it.
So, but that's what I'm saying. Let them look at both of them. Maybe a learning center is what the committee really thinks that the downtown needs for the Wonder Gardens. It needs that in lieu of. So, that's why I kind of agree with Derek on it. I don't agree with changing the RFP. Let's get it going.
You're going to slow the whole thing down.
You're going to slow it down and we're going to miss the, the, the center.
Right. And I guess I would just say, and it, and it really doesn't matter probably to anybody up here except me, but for the applicants that we received on the first round, are any of those applicants the same on the second round here? Because we had.
You, you, when you made the motion to, to close the last, and we let, we dismissed them without prejudice. So, they, they can come in just as anyone else and apply through the process.
Right.
No one's excluded.
But I, which is fabulous. That's, that's great. But I'm just curious, are there any folks that have submitted?
No, no one submitted this time until you all give us the approval. But you, you have folks who've expressed interest who would like to be notified upon the approval of, of an RFP being distributed.
And the folks who, I'm sorry.
Oh, one, one question. Assuming we stick with the restaurant. I know in the first group, we had one that wanted to basically have the restaurant, but it was going to have a food cart parked in the back. That's not permitted by this RFP, I hope. Restaurant's a restaurant.
What we say in the proposal is they have to adhere to all zoning requirements, licensing requirements. So, we would go through and evaluate each of the proposals for compliance.
So, in the evaluation process, if someone were to turn that in.
Yeah, but I mean, we know what our zoning process, could somebody open that up and then park a food cart behind it and serve the food out of that into the restaurant?
Well, part of the review would be determining how it fits into the land development code. And I believe previously when that was looked at, that's one of the reasons that application didn't move forward.
Okay.
Okay.
So, all right, so if we're going to go forward as amended with the disclosure, the other obvious point is, and I think some other people in council are getting at this too. obvious point is, and I think some other people in council are getting at this, too, once that RFP starts, council doesn't talk to anyone about this. It's up to the committee?
No one talks.
Right, no one talks to anybody, including the Wonder Gardens, actually. But any, any person who's got an idea, no.
Then it is...
That's the RFP process.
I think, too, is if you like, we can, if you, if you all decide to keep the process moving forward, we can still reach out to CBRE for assistance with our process or possibly the review, if that's where you wanted us to go as well.
I think that's a good idea. Okay. Counsel?
As long as it doesn't delay.
Correct, with that understanding.
But the policy point is, we're open to the Wonder Gardens to be considered. I mean, that's what's decided here. And people, and people are going to be advised of that, meaning restaurant potential.
Well, does that open it up that if I wanted to put in a learning center, I could also submit?
Derek?
No.
No.
I mean, this is, this is a, this is a unique set of circumstances.
Due to existing...
The fact that it's already there.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion, counsel? And do we, we have no public comment here? We've had several, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Anything further? Roll call, please.
Can I get a clarification?
Yeah?
He can talk, he can talk.
Absolutely. I mean, we don't have a public comment section right now, but we will in about 20 seconds, if that's okay? If that's okay, Wes, okay? A roll call, please.
Can I ask a motion?
I don't think we made a motion. I make a motion to accept the RFP.
As amended?
And allowing the Wonder Gardens to also submit.
I think Peter made it, and then he amended his motion, and you agreed to it.
I don't...
Anyhow, I second his motion.
That's fantastic. Nope, okay, dynamite, thanks.
Semantics.
Do we have the clarification? Okay. Dynamite, and a second, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Simmons?
Yes.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Okay, dynamite, we are now at mayor and council member reports. Fred?
In an effort to get the mean over, none.
Mike?
Hello.
I'll be quick, two things. Something's come up, I'm not gonna be here tomorrow, but I think we have a quorum for the vote on the ad valorem, and I didn't see any, I hope it's perfunctory. If you want, Peter, I can call in, but, you know, I'll try my best, but I think, hopefully from the previous conversations, it's perfunctory. Secondly, in the interest of time, I'll make this real short, but I like to make it longer. I had a great meeting with our new county commissioner over at Starbucks over here on Saturday for almost three hours, and the topics at that point were the whole water situation, as well as the Sun Trail. But I'll leave it at that in the interest of time.
That's good. Dynamite, thank you. Laura?
Okay, quickly, last meeting, we had a great turnout, we had to add 30 chairs or so, and it was obvious that some people had never come here before, but it was great to hear from the public. But I'd like them not to miss something that Councilman O'Flynn pointed out, that when they look at their tax bill and it says $3,700, okay, you say that's enough, you don't need any more money, but then look a little bit further. Of that $3,700, Benita Singh City gets 5%. Okay, so we get $185. So folks, start writing your county commissioners every day, send them an email, do your homeowners' association, that Benita Springs no longer wants to be the piggy bank, the, you know, the piggy bank for Lee County, and maybe they might listen to us when we also make the same pitch. So.
Great, thank you, Laura. Greg?
I just wanna thank everybody for coming out for September 11th celebration Patriots Day at the fire station. It was a great turnout. I think it was well-received, and mayor and everybody did a great job, so just thank you for that.
And the stone looks great, the piece of the towers, yep.
Yeah, no, fantastic job at 9/11, Greg, as well, and we've covered a lot of items here today, so thank you, everybody. And we're gonna now go for the approval of the minutes and then public comment.
Move.
Okay, motion to approve in a second, roll call, please.
Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Great, and now public comment. Anybody that would like to speak at this time, please come forward. Thank you, Wes, for your patience. Welcome.
First of all, thank you, guys, for considering us as part of the RFP process.